Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next Board of Education meeting is on Tuesday, June 27th at 7:30 PM in the Board of Education meeting room. Good evening, everyone. We've got a full house. Michelle, can we see Zoom here or in front of me?
You only see it when she lets them in.
Okay. Good. All right. Good. Thank you. So, good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us in person and on Zoom. We have a full agenda. Hard to believe graduation is upon us. Congratulations to all upcoming graduates, those moving up from elementary school, those moving up from Middlesex Middle School, and those graduating from Darien High School. Looks like the weather might be with us. Congratulations to all eight award winners who were here this evening at the Superintendent Citizens Award. It was a great ceremony celebrating our students and all that they do day in and day out in our schools and in our communities. We recognize those students, and it was just an incredible celebration of their success at their various stages of being in the Darien school system. So, congratulations again to all eight winners. A big thank you to all those teachers and staff that are retiring this year. Thank you for your time and dedication to our students and the district. A healthy and happy and best wishes in your retirement or your next journey, wherever that may take you. Thank you for all the staff across the district for the hard work and focus this year to make it another successful year for all our students. Thank you to our parents for all the hard work behind the scenes and for your continued engagement with the board and the district. We work as a community, and to continue to be that high-performing district and one that is one of the best districts in the state and the nation, we need your feedback, and we are listening as a board and as a district. We keep the focus on our children, their safety, security, and education each day. This is a guiding principle for the work we do as a dedicated volunteer board. While we may always have challenges and differences, we must realize that the world continues to change each day at a fast pace. And while we may not always agree, we must continue to support the needs of all students across the district. Life will continue to make us uncomfortable with change, but we must work through that change as a community to support each other and our students. We continue to be recognized as a high-performing district in the state and the nation. Teachers and staff from across the state and the metro area continue to look for opportunities to be part of the district. That speaks to the focus and investments we have made in education in our community. Thank you also to all those that participated in the survey. While headlines sell newspapers, your continued engagement and feedback as parents is what is important. Negative headlines, social media posts, websites, email campaigns, and posted information out of context all feed misinformation and add stress and anxiety across the district and to our students. As a leading district, we are much better than that. We must continue to focus on the needs of our students. Thank you for staying connected through our board meetings and through direct email to the board and administration. We appreciate all the participation over the last school year from our parents, and we will continue to listen and learn. Our students in school and graduating are faced with a fast-paced and changing world each day. Thank you also to all those in the district supporting our great summer programs and to all those parents who will continue to be part of the drop-off lines all summer long. I hope you take some time this summer to spend with family and friends, and as my daughters would tell me, "Dad, be in the moment. Put the phone down, iPad down, and close the computer. Create a memory and be in the moment with your family." So, thank you and have a great summer. We'll move on to Michelle. Public comment.
If anyone in person would like to participate, please wait for the chair to recognize you.
We will do people in person first. Please. Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Good evening, everyone. John Dunn, 175 Raymond. I've been a member of the DEI team since its inception, and just wanted to share some personal thoughts with you tonight. I've enjoyed getting to know so many of the wonderful members who were involved throughout this year and last. We're lucky to have some absolutely fantastic students, teachers, parents, and principals in the district. However, as we discuss the findings, it's important to mention consultant Mr. Ken Shelton, who co-facilitated multiple meetings in the spring of 2022. Mr. Shelton turned out to be a divisive figure within the community, blocking many parents, including DEIT members, on professional social media accounts. Approximately 1,000 parents and community members voiced their opposition to him in a petition, and despite this feedback, the administration was adamant that Mr. Shelton was the only consultant to do this work. We all know how that went. As the board adjusts its findings tonight, I would encourage them to observe the lack of quantifiable recommendations in it. While qualitative advice can be additive, we need to understand how we could evaluate these recommendations on a defined frequency after they are potentially implemented. Specifics for that are missed. Additionally, I hope the report would have spent more time on what is working in our schools rather than just keep seeking to identify problems. When no school system is perfect, our teachers and students should be commended for what they're doing right. We should be learning from our best practices within town. As a Tokonik dad, the passport around the world event is a perfect example of highlighting the abundant cultural diversity in our schools, and would be easy to replicate across all elementary schools. Get that one unmentioned. Finally, I'd ask the board to consider if the 14 meetings over more than 40 hours were the best use of our teachers, students, administrators, and parents' time and the district's resources for this final report, especially in light of our district's declining test points. It's disappointing that Dr. Tranberg departs. His legacy will be one that prioritizes equity over excellence. In my view, it's very unfortunate that Dr. Tranberg leaves his role with the district in worse shape than he found it. We are in a challenging position, one ripe for dissension, friction, and in dire need of a true administrative leadership to help restore unity and our academic excellence. Darien deserves better.
Thanks for speaking, Mr. Dunn.
Anyone else in person?
Hi, Diane Urban, 10 Crane Road. As the CDE SP DEI Chair, part of my role is to speak up for the right of all students to a safe and inclusive learning environment. Related to tonight's Equity Team presentation, I am sharing a small sample of powerful comments from students to remind us that they have been asking and waiting for change. In June 2020, a Change.org petition with over 2,000 signatures asked Darien schools to provide resources and training from groups and perspectives that are underrepresented in Darien. A group of current and former DPS students wrote to the BOE calling for an inclusive curriculum, annual DEI training for all staff and teachers, including coaches, age-appropriate resources to further education outside the classroom, and a sustainable method to hold all accountable. There were dozens of written testimonies, many sharing sentiments like, quote, "DHS alumni are so prepared for the collegiate experience in regards to academic rigor, yet so ill-prepared for social and cultural diversity," end quote. Other students shared how it is difficult to be different in Darien, including lack of representation in the student body, the staff, the administrators, and the town. They note lack of knowledge and sensitivities, bullying, microaggressions, and racist slurs. On October 12, 2021, following a threatening misogynistic and anti-LGBTQ+ vandalism event at DHS, community members stood before the board asking for change. Among many disturbing incidents, one student talked about slurs in a can that was rolled at her face. She said, quote, "Previously, I did not go to anyone to report these issues because I thought it was hopeless and that nothing would change. But now I am asking you to please hear us out and give us hope back," end quote. A Black and Native American bisexual alumna shared that she had been victim to countless racist, sexist, and homophobic slurs and actions. She stated, quote, "Now it is time for all of us to step up as a community and change the way the town interacts with anything it deems as different," end quote. On June 14, 2022, several students spoke up at the BOE about mental health and a need for culture change. One student asked for social change in Darien to normalize mental health needs and said, quote, "The only way to spark this change is by implementing curriculum directly into the schools," end quote. In addition to these high school students, elementary students have shared with the board how they have faced racial insults from peers, with a first grader asking to, quote, "Help kids learn that it's wrong to make kids feel bad just because of their race," end quote. There are more, but I'll end with this student quote from October 2021. Quote, "This is human rights. This is feeling safe at school when I'm trying to learn. At one of the best schools in the country, students shouldn't feel harassed and threatened because they're just trying to learn." She goes on.
You're almost at time.
I hope that you can hear the young voices tonight and show us that you care and show us the change that we are looking for. I hope you listen to the presentation tonight with your comments in mind.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else in person? Sorry.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone on Zoom?
If anyone on Zoom would like to participate, please use the raise hand icon. Carolina Magui, you are recognized and unmuted.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to take two seconds to say thank you so much to Chris Tranberg for everything he's done for the school. I'm so sorry that he's leaving us and very, very sorry and apologetic about what was said about him in the survey. But, Chris, I wish you the best. Thank you so much for your participation and your work at the Darien High School and, sorry, at the DPS, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Carolina, for speaking.
Armel Jacobs, you are unmuted and recognized.
Armel, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Hear us?
Can you guys hear me? Can you see me?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chris. I just, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for the way that you tried. I see it. I see so clearly how hard you tried here. I'm sorry. I'm really sorry that we couldn't get it together as a community to help. And I'm sorry that this board did not rally behind you in the way that I think all of you should have. I think it's not right that you started a committee. You tried to answer. This man tried to answer the call of the students. We let people come in and bully. We let people bully this board. I'm talking to the board. You let people bully your hires, your consultants, your students. I think you need to be stronger. When you see people coming into your house with pitchforks, you say, "Not in my house. You can't come in here with that dagger." You need to protect your people. When you don't, we lose them. And when we lose them, we lose our integrity, and we lose our ability to show this community that we're moving forward, not backward. You're letting all these people come in here, grab the headlines, and tell everyone, "Darien's still a backward place." We're not. We're not. We're changing. I know that certain people don't like that we're changing, but tough noogies. We're changing. We need the board to step up. I know that you can do it. I'm so sorry, Chris. I'm sorry to see you go. We're going to try. We're going to keep trying. And I want to leave just the community with one quote here. This is about pride because it's Pride Month. Pride is important because somewhere out there, there's a confused teenager who still thinks maybe being dead is better than being gay. I want people to take that to heart. When you see the yucky stuff in our headlines, when you see what people are speaking out against, I want you to understand, knowing what we've been through as a community. You need to protect these kids from these people who are attacking pride, who are attacking the DEI measures that those of us are trying to push forward. It's on you to protect them. And thank you.
Thanks for speaking, Armel. Anyone else on Zoom, Michelle?
There are no more raised hands at this time.
All right. Thank you all for participating in public comment.
A hand popped up.
Sure, go ahead.
Krista Carnes, you are unmuted and recognized.
Sorry. Hi, I'm in my car.
Go ahead, Krista.
Thanks, Krista Carnes, 40 Fitch Avenue. I just wanted to say that I appreciate what everybody just said, and as a member of the DEI district team, I want you to know that few voices that had predetermined what they wanted to take out of it and convey and shut this down from the beginning is not the full representation of the people who participated, and that the overwhelming majority of parents, teachers, administrators that participated in the committee really do want to go forward. So, if we didn't make the strides that we made, that we might have wanted to make, it does not, it does not negate work and the call that we have been asked to do. And we have to keep moving forward bit by bit so that we can make a difference for the kids that are coming next. So, just keep that in mind, please.
Thanks for speaking. Anyone else on Zoom, Michelle?
Teresa Voat, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Teresa Voat, 22 Circle Road. I just want to make one comment. I read the results of the communication survey, and while I definitely agree with some of it, namely Aspen, I saw some comments on there that I found really disturbing in relation to Chris Tranberg. And I've lived in this town 21 years. I know the words there do not speak for the majority of people from Darien, but I will say what made me sad is that people thought it was okay to actually put those words down in black and white and submit them. I just want people to know that's not the Darien I know. And, Chris, I wish you really, I wish you, I wish you well. Good luck. Thanks.
Thanks, Teresa, for speaking. Anyone else on Zoom, Michelle?
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Hello? Can you, can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you. Your name?
Hi, I'm sorry. Yes, for some reason, I cannot find my hand raiser. I've used it before, but it's disappeared from my.
Karen, you're, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Karen Cummins, 19 Pointa Woods Road South. I was on the DEI committee. I too want to thank Chris Tranberg for his Herculean effort and leadership. It is no small task. It's very complicated, and I think he did an amazing job. I also just want to voice how important I think it is that we have a diversity, equity, and inclusion program. I think it's critical that we continue the program. In the future years, we only scratch the surface. It's not easy to do and to do right. I would certainly advocate for an outside expert to come in to help guide these conversations. And I really do appreciate all of the parents and the students and the administrators and teachers who participated and their devotion to it, but I just want to express my deep, deep desire for this to continue and for the board to support a DEI program going forward. Thank you very much.
Thanks for speaking, Karen. Anyone else on Zoom, Michelle?
I'm going to give it a second. There are no more raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for all those that spoke. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening in person and online. Just, I'll just reiterate a couple of things Mr. Chairman remarked on, only because we are live and it's also being recorded here. I'll just name the recipients this evening real quickly, just one more time of the superintendents awards, just for the record. In the Henley School, Summer Erickson. In the Homeschool, Emma House. In the Ox Ridge School, Emma Wang. In the Royal School, Julie Graziaza. In the Tokonik School, Jack Stricker. And Middlesex, Jack Nolan. And at the High School, Sophie Shu and Jafar Salman. So, we congratulate all of those recipients who you see before you this evening. Mr. Chairman also recognized the retirees, and I do so, be a little bit repetitive also. You can see the names real quickly here will be coming up of all of our retirees this particular year. This year, we pause to celebrate the significant accomplishments of faculty and staff members you see before you and to recognize and thank the 17 retirees for their significant contributions to our children and to our special community. Collectively, over the years, our special group of retirees have served and nurtured generations of students, served in countless committees, participated in a variety of clubs, activities, lived through building projects, accreditation, visits, worked with many administrators, and just as many educational reform initiatives and educational acronyms, some of which have come around again. And who would have known in their final years gave everything in helping the district navigate a global pandemic? And finally, the smoke. In his book, Learning by Heart, Roll and Birth suggests that most of us become educators because we want to use our hearts and as well as our minds in order to promote young people's learning, because we believe deeply that learning is one of the most noblest and most profound endeavors of the human experience, and because we're firmly committed to the value of learning in a democratic community. Our honorees are representative of these beliefs. They say that retiring is never an easy decision to make. Now, maybe the words of a 13-year-old from New York might provide some words of comfort and appreciation to our retirees when they look back on their times in our schools. People tell us not to look back, Sid, but sometimes we have to. This is so we can see how beautiful a canvas of our life has become. Remember all the little splashes and smears of paint, all the little mistakes we made? They really won't matter in the end, not when you see the whole big, beautiful picture. A special thank you to all our retirees for the color, texture, and form that you have brought to the Darien public schools. And if I may say on a personal note as you leave, may the road always rise to meet you. May the wind be always at your back. May the sun shine warmly upon your face, and the rains fall softly upon your field. Until we meet again, may God hold you in the pen of his hands. Farewell, colleagues. You will be fondly remembered. Please join me in a warm round of applause and appreciation of our retirees' dedication to the Darien public schools, and most importantly, for the current love for our students. The thing's come full circle. If you haven't seen the, I'll call them the kids today. John, no disrespect, the kids, our senior class members, our senior class going down into kindergarten and visiting the schools. Thank you to the members of the high school for organizing that event and the high school administration, and for all the students as they processed through the schools. There may be a couple of pictures here scrolling for you in a moment or two. We have the Royal Homes and Ox Ridge School. They're moving up as tomorrow. Fitch Academy is tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at the Wheat Beach. We have the Middle School tomorrow evening, and also we look forward to the high school weather permitting. Cross our fingers for good weather on June 14th at 5:00. It was just wonderful to see. The teachers got such a kick out of it. Our students did our senior class, and, listen, look at them there. And our staff did too. It was just a wonderful event. So, thank you for starting a new tradition in the schools. I also want to recognize our Quiz Bowl. It has passed, but the last Memorial Day, the high school Quiz Bowl team under Dan's records supervision and other a few other staff members gave up their Memorial Weekend and went to Atlanta. They placed eighth place. Congratulations to them out of over 300 teams. We also had a ninth grader, Naev Shakal, earned a Rising Star Individual Award. He just placed fourth highest-scoring freshman in entire field. It's built on the recognition of our young people at the Middle School, and it's just wonderful to see that continue to grow, kids be recognized, staff giving up such weekends at Chexco. So, thank you. Darien Summer School, next end of school year, is about to start on June 26th. We will have for ESY, for those eligible for transportation, those notifications will go out this week directly to the families. If you still want to register, you still may register online. Still available. Congratulations to our Performing Arts 308 at the 308 Halo Awards that recognizes the performing arts of students in schools across Connecticut. My understanding is best that we had for Best Chorus for Newsies and Best Performance by a Supporting Actor in a Play, Aidan Kennedy as Calvin in The Tempest. Congratulations again one more time for 308. Our Spring Athletics is also up and running and concluding, and we congratulate the Darien Boys Volleyball for SEIC and state championships. The Girls Tennis for SAC Championships, the Girls Lacrosse for SAC Championships, and I believe we have a game tomorrow evening. So, we wish them good luck there, too. A special thank you to John. He sits on the board with Shwaha for their significant contributions to the board this year. We look forward to Shwaha returning in the fall, and as we have done before, as the board has recognized, we wish John well as he heads off to Yale in the fall. Congratulations, John. Upcoming board meetings, June 22nd, we have a finance subcommittee. The 23rd, a communications subcommittee. There is a regular board meeting currently scheduled for June 27th, and I have dates for the board retreat and the rescheduling of the July 25th meeting. I'll send that under shepherd cover at this particular point. I did say I would share a little notice just on behalf of the title, but if you don't happen to be at graduation and you're looking for something to do, the Flag Day Ceremony is being held at the Veteran Circle in front of the Darien Town Hall at 4:30 on Wednesday this afternoon. And since it is the last meeting before the last day of school, I do wish Mr. Tranberg all the best, wishing well, and thank him for all of his contributions. I also want to thank the community for supporting the students and staff again through what has been a challenging couple of years, and we very much appreciate everybody's efforts. And as the board chair said, I hope you get a chance to relax this summer and make some special memories. So, it's with much gratitude and appreciation for your collective efforts and support of our students and staff this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Dunn. We'll move on to student representative reports. John Raskoff. Are we sure Yale is ready for you?
We'll see about it. I'm currently in communications about something that's wrong with their system, so we'll see what happens.
You're on your way.
Never dull.
Make Ellen proud.
So, this is a rather brief one. This is just some end-of-year announcements. Again, congratulations to all of the sports. Congratulations to 308. Congratulations to all of the classes 2023. Current, today, actually, the seniors, as Dr. Ably mentioned, went to the elementary schools. We enjoyed it a lot. I think the teachers enjoyed it more than the students, if you can believe that. The seniors also just had their senior symposium presentations today at 1:30, which culminates their internships. So, in the event that those all go well, that is the official end of their, all their graduation requirements. The underclassmen can pick up their yearbooks starting tomorrow and also on Wednesday, considering tomorrow is a special circumstance, school day. It's a makeup day, so they don't technically have to go in for that. That's for all the parents who are watching. Tomorrow is also a senior picnic mandatory, actually, because immediately afterward is the graduation rehearsal. Should be fun. Wednesday is the last day of school, really short classes. Make sure you're all there, sign your books. Graduation seniors have to be there at 4:15 PM and no later, please. Send them good weather omens because if there is bad weather, only two people per senior can go, and seniors should have tickets. So, please make sure they distribute those. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. We have a motion to approve the following minutes, the minutes of the special meeting held on May 23rd, 2023, minutes of the regular meeting held on May 23rd, 2023, and minutes of the special meeting held on May 30th, 2023. We have a motion, Julie, second by John. All those in favor. unanimous with all present. Thank you. We will move on to board committee reports. Sarah.
The curriculum committee met last Thursday. We talked about the transition between eight and nine and some potential changes to courses, which we will hopefully come to see our way, some of them and all of them in the fall. So, stay tuned for that. If you haven't watched our meeting, please do so, because there's some good information.
Thank you, Sarah. Julie.
Thank you. Communications Committee met June 1st. We reviewed the results of the community and staff survey, as mentioned, and our next meeting, I believe, is June 23rd at 8:30 AM.
Thank you, Julie.
The Policy Subcommittee met on June 9th. We had an update on four, excuse me, five sort of edits to various policies or existing systems. The next policy may be to be determined.
I am very pleased to announce that all three schools for Henley Homes and Royal are out to bid. So, we are waiting for those to come back. The first set of bids will come back actually later this week, and we'll be looking at that. There'll be an iterative process, so we won't have final numbers for a while yet. But, you know, we are certainly looking carefully at the numbers. We have had a couple of things, including some requirements from other boards, some unforeseen conditions like soil that wasn't good for building on, some design refinements and some scope adjustments. So, we are looking at a pretty tight budget and the possibility that we may need to go back to replenish some of our contingency funds, but that's all. We're waiting to see if the bids come in. I'm just telling you that for information, but, you know, for the time being, it's more important to see what the actual bids are. The plan is to have shovels in the ground in mid-August. That's still the plan. And just so, you know, the board members may get questions, and just so the community is aware, the general schedule is to start construction on the new parts of all of the buildings with the idea that those will be ready for the following school year so that when we do renovations, there's additional swing space that we can use. That's the general schedule. So, anyway, very exciting.
Thank you, Jo. Thank you. And thank you to the HHR Committee, the time and energy spent on these buildings. Committees is just extraordinary, and again, it's all volunteer. The exciting news, too, Ox Ridge is drawing to a close. Luke is probably incredibly happy about that. He's done an incredible job of managing the school and the physical plant up there while Phase Two comes to a close. He's done an incredible job of managing the school and the physical plant up there while phase two comes to a close. We will be having an Ox Ridge Building Committee meeting onsite Thursday, the fifteenth at ten o'clock. So it'll be exciting to be in that school with the building committee as we march toward closure of that project. So thank you, Luke, for all that you've done around that. All right, we will move on to presentations and discussions. Report on high school, college acceptances and awards, internships, profile on high school class of twenty twenty three and post-high school plans. So this is always exciting to hear where all our students are headed. So thank you.
Thank you and good evening. And I'll do my annual disclaimer that I'm really bad at clicking and talking at the same time. John, I'm gonna put you in charge of reminding me if I don't. Okay, awesome. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Megan Emanuel. So I'm the very proud director of guidance in grade six through twelve here in the district. I am so happy to be here this evening to share with you the exciting plans of our graduating class, amazing and talented class of twenty twenty three. We have had a front row seat to watch our seniors play, laugh, work, dance, compete, paint, act, sing and dream over the past four years. And we have loved being a part of their journeys. As we present the plans for the class of twenty twenty three, I'd also like to take a brief moment to acknowledge and celebrate the hard work of the school's counseling department and our administrative support staff. We are so fortunate to have such a hardworking and committed, passionate group of educators, helping families to navigate the post-high school planning process, especially the constantly changing landscape of college admissions. I know there's a very full agenda this evening, so I will keep my remarks as brief as possible, but I'm so grateful for the opportunity to celebrate this special class. We're ready. Okay. So the class of twenty twenty three has three hundred and forty-three seniors. More than ninety-six percent are pursuing higher education in the fall. We have five students entering trade school or training, including welding, electrical and auto mechanics. We also have five students who will be studying overseas. We have students pursuing gap years, students who are still undecided or exploring their options, and students continuing beyond a fourth year of high school or participating in other educational programs. This year, our office sent materials for a grand total of three thousand five hundred and seventy-six applications. Considering the slightly smaller size of this class, this is proportionally similar to past years. This represents the total number of transcript requests we received and does not reflect the applications that were withdrawn or incomplete by students after we have sent materials. Once we figure those numbers, then we have a net total of just over twenty-seven hundred apps or an average of seven point nine completed applications per student. And the number of average completed applications is also consistent with the past four years. Our students will be enrolling at a hundred and thirty-five different institutions in the fall. Once again, we did very well on the early decision pools. About fifty-one percent of the students applied under a binding early decision plan, which is similar to previous years. Fifty-three percent of the students who applied the early decision were accepted. And overall, as you can see, the early decision data has remained relatively consistent over the past four years. You will notice in your packet that the total number of ED apps, two hundred and nine, versus the number of students applying early decision, one seventy-four, is different. The difference is the number reflects also early decision two applications. As you may know, early decision two is a binding decision plan that's usually later in January, designed to capture students who did not already commit to an ED in the fall. In some cases, a student may have been deferred or denied by their ED one school and then submitted an ED two, ED two application. So this is where we had the most applications, both this year and over the last four years. There's not a lot of big, huge surprises or changes here. This list remains fairly consistent over time. There we go. So this is the most attended. Again, a few new schools on this list. We expect a little fluctuation, but no big, huge surprises here either. In terms of geography, geography remains fairly stable as well. We have about a quarter of our students who will remain in the New England area. And as I mentioned, we have five students who are going overseas to study in Egypt, England, Scotland and Ireland. In your packet, looking at chart number seven, you have a list of schools by percentage of acceptances over the past four years. Each year, we look at the schools with more selective rates of acceptance. In most cases, our acceptance rates are actually higher than the national average. It is important to consider, even when comparing to national acceptance rates, that the sample size is fairly small in many cases. We look at these numbers every year to see if there's anything surprising. We reach out to schools where we're maybe perhaps not seeing the results. We would expect to open the conversations and further understand how we can better advise our families. We do continue our practice of meeting individually with over two hundred schools that visit our school every fall. We have been told that this is a really unique practice. We have a school counselor meet with every representative that comes through to help them understand a little bit more about our programs and our students. And certainly to build those relationships, we feel it's imperative to the work we do. So we're really proud of that. This is our state school application data. This also remained fairly consistent this year with about a hundred and twenty-seven completed applications. We did see an increase in the enrollment at both UConn, Stanford and N C C. Both of these institutions offer really wonderful and unique opportunities, so we were happy to see the increased enrollment there. Chart number nine in your packet shows our IV analysis. We're always very proud of how our kids do and the very competitive IV process. We had ninety-four applications to IVs this year with three point eight percent of the class enrolling in an IV. This year, we saw increases in percentages of acceptances at a number of schools, including Dartmouth and Princeton, with the overall percentage of acceptances staying relatively consistent with past years. It's also important to note that we still have some apps that are still on an IV waitlist or with unknown results. And once again, we look at these numbers every year and do outreach as appropriate. There we go. So this is a look at a longitudinal four-year look at GPA and SAT and ACT scores. And as you can see, it's really consistent over time. One note on chart eleven in your packet, which is the summary of school by school. Just to help with the interpretation, the net apply reflects the total number of transcript requests less the incompletes and withdrawn applications. And if you go from right to left, when you add the acceptances, denies and waitlists, it may not add up to the net apply because it does not include applications that are still listed as deferments or unknowns. The numbers may also include students who perhaps were on a waitlist and then accepted or on a waitlist and denied. So they may be listed in two places, but we did just want to represent the data that we thought might be most valued by the public. So gathering some additional information from our students and the results were interesting. So these were, we always want to know about special programs. So thirty-three of our students reported that they were admitted or will be participating in special programs. And you can see a list of examples of the kinds of things they'll be doing, including honors programs, audition-only programs, dual degree or accelerated programs, first year study abroad opportunities, ROTC, and other prestigious programs specific to the college, such as selective engineering or business school programs. Here's a little bit of information on waitlists. As you can see, just a small handful of students said they would change their, their plans if admitted off a waitlist. And then these were career clusters, the top two, the numbers of the top two career clusters. It's always interesting and valuable to learn what our students interested in studying. The, you can see that there's a wide variety and we are so excited to see where the journey takes them. So thank you for the opportunity to share the impressive accomplishments of this class, and I'm happy to take any board questions at this time.
Thank you, Megan. Thanks for continuing to compile all this good information. So it's always exciting to see at the end of the school year.
Thank you. It sure is.
Well done. Board questions? Dave.
Sorry, Dennis isn't here, so I'm gonna try and jump in.
He's always nice to me, Dave.
Okay.
Channel your own Dennis.
Dave, you have one minute.
If Dennis were here, he would very nicely ask, what are we doing to gather data metrics for people once they leave district? And if anything's changed so far this year.
Dave, could you just?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't.
Was that not, sorry.
That is his annual question. Thank you. So we are continuing, we gather personal email addresses from our students as part of our senior survey. And we do continue to, to email them. We are, we're trying to start to email them after freshman year to, to see whether they're remaining, whether they're transferring, because I know there's always questions about transfer. And also as they're ending their fourth year in terms of what their, their plans are. Are they graduating in four years? Did they find that they needed to stay a fifth year? Are they going to graduate school? Are they going to the, the world of work? So we're trying to do that survey at the end of their freshman, their first year and their fourth year. Thank you for the question.
John.
Thanks for compiling the information and just to the public, there's a lot more detailed information within our information packets. If you want to go crunch some numbers and check it out. And it is enlightening. I mean, it's enlightening that, you know, the results over the last four years, the data are relatively consistent. And, you know, visually graduate is pretty much playing out for us, I think, over these years, even post-COVID, if you will. One anecdotal story we often hear is the waitlist. And I was surprised to see actually a number of applications remain stable because I hear about the twenty-twoers, you know.
Yes.
So if you can kind of, the Common App phenomenon and weave that through what's going on with the waitlist. Are kids hearing late or students hearing later in the acceptance process?
So there was a few things. I would echo, I'm always kind of waiting to see that like our average applications are up to twenty-five because we're hearing of these record number of applications that these schools are receiving. And so it's very interesting that our, that our numbers are, are remaining fairly the same. And I would say in terms of, as an average, a reasonable number, like our average, you know, eight applications, I think is a super reasonable number. I would always say six to eight as a counselor. So I think there has been, not to dive too deep into the COVID things, but I know that there was a little bit of a COVID panic that happened that I do think we're starting to see die down a little bit. I think in Darien specifically, one of the, anecdotally, the hypotheses we have is that these kids are really well supported in this process. They're really well supported at home. They're very well supported at school. I think they have the opportunity to, to do a really meaningful college search. They have the opportunity to do the visits and to really compile a list of schools that, that they can be excited about. So Common App has made it easier to apply. Test Optional has made it easier to apply. But I think that we're just continuing to do what we've always done, I think, both at home and at school, and just really want kids to have a meaningful process. And so I, we just think the kids are super well-supported and that's showing out in the numbers without the, you know, the, the panic that we might be seeing elsewhere.
How about the waitlist? Is, are we hearing later?
We are, I think that has also gotten a little bit better. The waitlist in twenty-one for the class of twenty-one, like we still had kids, July, August, that were on the waitlist. I think colleges are starting to get their algorithm back a little bit and are starting to, to use the waitlist a little bit differently. I think we are still seeing much higher than pre-COVID numbers of waitlists. But I do think that we're hearing kids hearing back about the waitlist much sooner than we were, say, in twenty-one and in twenty-two. So this year, it seemed like a little less of, of an issue. And again, it's always, I think, once, what we're finding, as you can see, there's about thirteen kids, I think, that said that that waitlist would change their outcome. I think that once kids have just kind of made that decision, that they're, they're good and comfortable and set with that decision, which again, I think speaks to that meaningful process and that they've, they've compiled a list of schools that they can be excited about.
Can I grab one more, dude? I'm going through the process the last time.
Yes.
It's kind of interesting.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. I guess test optional is also a new phenomenon. My first two boys didn't get to, I guess, enjoy. That's the right, or the optionality of it, if you will. And do you get a view on how many applications go in with tests and without?
So, oh, pretty much because, especially because Connecticut uses the SAT, all of our kids have test scores. And, and anecdotally, we actually couldn't ask that question on our survey this year. That's a different thing. But anecdotally, pretty much kids, when they had them, many submitted or submitted to some. I don't, you know, we didn't have a ton of kids that didn't submit at all. Because as you've seen, our test scores are pretty strong and it's just an additional data point for most kids. So because they all have test scores, many of them were still submitting.
Thank you.
Julie.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a quick question. If, if about a third of our students are getting an ED, that kind of means they submitted one application, correct? So does that mean that that skews our average for the rest?
So they can only submit one ED application, but they could have submitted other non-binding plans. Like then you start getting into like restrictive early action and things like that. So certainly there were some students, like we had, we had students submit one, we had students submit twenty. So there were certainly, you know, outliers on both sides of that, but they can only submit one ED app. But we do have a lot of students that will submit one ED app and other forms of applications at the same time. So they might put in eight or ten. You know, I think students are starting to say a little bit more of like, I'm just gonna see what happens with my ED and maybe I don't have to write all those essays. So I think kids are also, again, pausing and, and waiting a little bit, which is a good thing, we think, that they're doing a meaningful search and really planning appropriately. Sure.
Jill.
Hi, Megan.
Hi.
Do my annual.
I thought I got your slide.
Yes. I have two things. One is, you know, we see that IV chart every year, which really represents, I think, partly the fact that we used to be all going in the Northeast and we don't anymore. So I continue to feel that there's probably a more representative set of schools that we should sure look at IVs. But I think, you know, there are other schools in the South, in the Midwest, in the California, where I'd love for us to explicitly think about what placement looks like. So that's my first statement. My second is, can we talk through students in transition, in the transition program, the nineteen to twenty-two year olds? I'd love to, I, I see some things in here, but I'd love to understand more explicitly. Starting from the beginning, the number is three forty-three graduates, but it's three hundred and thirty-one. Are the transition students just not on that slide? Is that where the delta is?
Yes. So you would see that reflected a little bit, I believe. Let me just get the right number for you. I believe it's in the summary chart. I believe that's chart number one.
Yes. So it's three hundred and thirty-one and then three forty-three students in the class.
Yep. So if you look on the, on chart one, which is the summary information for the class. So you'll see some of the students that are going to transition programs captured and the, the others undecided gap. So there's a small handful of students. And, and sometimes in the unknown, it really depends on where they are in that planning.
Okay.
So on your first chart. Then you also have your students going to trade school.
Yeah, there. Okay. And so when we say a hundred and thirty-five institutions, that encompasses the whole universe of trade schools, maybe a transition plan in an institutional setting and colleges, or a hundred and thirty-five is traditional?
To be honest, I believe that refers to four-year schools.
Okay.
And probably in four, four-year and two-year schools. I'm happy to try and gather the data of how many other educational opportunities are in addition to the one thirty-five, if that's helpful.
Okay. And then can you talk about that special program slide in more detail, please? And then before I leave office and I'll be quiet. We heard from a, we, as a board, heard from a member of the public, and then I heard as I walked in the door from another, about our transition programming. And I think this is, always touches on it. But I think we really do need to, at some point as a board, really thoroughly talk about what our transition plan looks like. What's the strategy? What's the, so this is a formal request to get that on an agenda item in the near future, please. Okay, thank you.
So specific, so this is student-reported. So we always want to put that caveat in there. So we basically have just asked, you know, if you're going to be participating in any programs. And these were some of the specific ones that they, that they outlined. So honors programs are usually based on, on GPA or other, you know, academic performances where a student would be invited to participate in an honors program at different schools that looks a little bit different. It could be different registration. It could be different housing. There's usually like, you know, there could be a, a, a learning, living community that's associated with an honors program. First year study abroad programs, we're seeing this a little bit, come up a little bit more, where students are offered admission, but they're offered admission on a campus abroad for their first semester. So instead of coming to the stateside university campus, they would do a semester at the university's program overseas and then join the US branch, the US campus in the spring. So we are seeing that come up a little bit more. So that is actually being used almost as an admission tool, that if you would like to come here, this is an opportunity. So it's usually an offer to a student, not necessarily a request by a student to do that. We've had, again, living learning communities, that's usually specifically based on a specific interest or area of study. So you might have a STEM living learning community where they're sharing a major or an area of study and living in the same dorms. That often comes with guest speakers and workshops and maybe an extra class. So students are invited to be, or can apply to be a part of that. Research fellowships are just some really unique opportunities. As you know, at the high school, we have our ASR program, which allows students to have a really unique and unusual opportunity to do really high-level research from throughout high school, which is creating some of these opportunities for them to continue on at the university level. We have students who are applying for and receiving ROTC scholarships or participating in the programs. And so that is, they'll, they, part of their responsibility at school is to train with a branch of the military and usually involves a service commitment afterwards. We had students this year that were actually really excited that they had applied to special programs at schools for academic support. So sometimes it's just a general, a general support. Sometimes it's specific to a student who might have ADHD or a student. a student who might have ADHD or a student who might have dyslexia. And so they're receiving different levels of academic support programs. And that's usually also by application. And we had several students in the survey express that they were really feeling that that was going to really help with their transition to school and getting off on a strong foot academically. As you know, we have magical theater and music and students at our school. And so oftentimes, if you're going to major or minor in those programs, that requires an audition. It's usually a very rigorous audition process. And so we have students who are participating in that and have gained entrance to those programs, which is not an easy thing to do. Keeping with the ambition of our students, our dual-degree and accelerated programs, so the three-plus-one programs. We have a number of students in six-year pharmacy programs or six-year med programs. So really, you know, looking to get through their graduate work at a little bit of a speedy race. I think I mentioned the first, oh, look, I put that in there twice. Cool, we already got over that. And then, and then lots of students that are gaining admission to, you know, very specific business programs or engineering programs that are all by application, again, based on their performance in high school and their intended major. I hope that helps.
So Megan, just as a follow-up to what Jill was saying. And I think there's some good questions and some information we got from constituents. But you look at all these great schools, and I think what I'd like to see on a go-forward basis is, this is great, but we've got a whole group of kids in transition, we've got a group of kids with IEPs, 504s, we have kids with disabilities. So you've got all these great schools listed. But what type of programs do they have for those students? And what are we doing to introduce those students to those programs?
Yeah.
There's a reference made here that Clemson University is known for their Clemson Life Program. Regarded as one of the top college programs and life skill programs for students with intellectual disabilities. We have students in town that are part of the Ablest Program. We have students in town that are doing a work-study up at Fairfield or Sacred Heart. So I think the board would like to see more information around that.
Absolutely.
This is great. Ivy League is great. All these continuous schools that our students get into. I will go back, no disrespect, and quote Dr. Brenner years ago. He said, "There is a school for everyone."
Agreed.
"In this country." And I think I'd like to see data that approaches that and looks at that.
Sure.
The kids that are transitioning, how are we helping them transition? I do think, Shirley, we need a, kind of a deep dive and then we, as a board, need to support what we think the district needs in terms of a transition program. I hear great things about New Canaan's transition program. Well, if New Canaan has a really good, strong transition program, there's no reason we should not have one. This is not about financial resources. This is about what's doing right for all our students. We sit up here and we preach, all our students are general ed students. But I think we need to make sure that we see the data and that, I know you are, but I think we need to see it working with those students and looking at and making sure parents in particular understand the breadth of programs that are out there for students. Their, the transition program is great, but I think it leaves a lot of parents hanging as to what's next.
I completely agree with you and I'm sure Shirley and I are more than happy to, to work on that. And I think there is a lot of great work going on and a lot of conversations and support that's happening. I know Shirley and I have extensive conversations about what the school counselors would need in order to, because that's also an evolving landscape in terms of transition programs and, and the way that, that colleges are becoming, you know, more accessible and more inclusive. And I think they're, the school, the colleges are working to really provide different levels of support. So we're continually trying, just like a traditional four-year plan, we're also trying to keep up with that changing landscape as well. And so I know we have Shirley's full support and Dr. Adley's full support in, in giving the school counselors and our school psychologists and our special education staff, whatever they need to, to support families in this process, because there's a lot, there's a lot of options.
We need a, we need a formalized program.
Sure. Happy to, happy to have the discussion with Shirley. And I don't know if Shirley wants to add anything to that.
Happy to work on that and happy to present to the board. And you're right, and we're in total agreement as we've worked on training and working with our school counselors, working with parents and understanding transition programs. But clearly, we're in agreement to have an explicit presentation and looking at our programs and what we can do is something that has been asked for before and we will make that happen as soon as we can. Hopefully in the fall, we won't wait till later on in the year, so if that's okay. We'll prepare to have that in terms of our planning, what it involves, the cohort of students that we have, that it would be appropriate for moving into 23, 24, and we'll, we'll certainly present it to the board.
Thank you. Any other board questions?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I was encouraged by the board discussion on this topic and I'm fully in support. I just wanted to add one other just consideration that, you know, the, the sort of overview of where students are going when they leave the Darien public schools is really a wonderful measure of the success of our SASS department and would be wonderful to hear. You know, a lot of the supports that our students receive are really about teaching them how to unlock their own potential, which is what we really hope for our students, is that they're all able to reach their own potential. And it would just be a wonderful way to see the way that we have been successful in Darien in supporting those kids from elementary all the way until K-8.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Megan.
Okay, my pleasure. And I will turn it over to Paul Roberto to talk about our wonderful senior internship program.
Thank you, Megan. I have a couple of seniors who are going to be participating by sharing their internship experience with us towards the end. So I will be brief with my remarks with the slides about the internship. Before I get started, we would not be able to have the internship without our two faculty advisors, Anne Branca and Matt Hookta. They start all the way back in August in trying to corral 330-plus seniors to get what they're supposed to do in order to participate in internships. So I do want to thank Anne and Matt for all their leadership for it. I also want to thank, and you'll see in the slide coming up, the dozens and dozens of businesses that accept our students. And, you know, it's often looked at as sometimes a one-way street where our kids are just benefiting from learning from these places of business. But the reality is, they obviously get a lot of it too, a lot of benefit too, of having our students there. So I do want to thank them. And lastly, I want to thank our faculty who serve as faculty mentors in order to help ensure that our students are having positive experiences and are safe while they do their internship. So just as a quick summary, our internship starts right after AP exams, around, this year was May 15th. It lasts up until today, as John mentioned before, with the senior symposium. Interns will go for about 30 hours a week, taking any information that they're learning and having journals, daily journals, that they are able to share with their faculty mentors and collecting information as they go along. It culminates in a senior symposium, which we had today. And again, it was about over 330 students. We did have a handful of students that selected not to be part of the internship and they stayed back in school and went to classes and also worked on a senior project individually with faculty mentors helping with that too. The next two slides talk briefly about the, again, the dozens of businesses that we have. Both Anne and Matt, Anne and Matt keep track of this from year to year. And we make sure that we try to keep very positive relationships with these areas of business in the tri-state area and also try to cultivate future ones too, moving forward. I think the clicker needs a new battery. Why don't I ask Shafay and Sophie to come on up and start sharing some of your experiences while I try to get the clicker to go to the last slide? So Sophie, why don't you go first?
Hi, so I'm Sophie and I did my senior internship at the law offices of STC TA, where I specialized in social education law. And I chose this internship because I have often been told that, because I like to argue, I would make a great lawyer. And I couldn't be sure of the statement because I obviously have not had anything to do with law in my high school experience. So I thought this would be kind of a make or break it experience where I could decide for sure if I want to become a lawyer. That has not been the case, but I have learned a lot about law, about the differences between advocacy and actually being an attorney, as well as a lot about social education, which I actually found that I'm very interested in, have quite a passion for. And at the same time, I want to thank my internship supervisor, STC TA, because I think on top of all the things about social education, about law, giving me all of this great filing work to do, but also giving me new bills that are passing through and having me read them and discuss them with her. She also taught me to really be an active member of the community. We had other discussions about that. And at the same time, she taught me that as important as work is, it's also very important to be taking physical, emotional and mental breaks. And as a certified workaholic, I think that this was a very important lesson to me. And I actually found that I enjoyed my work better after taking walks with my dog or going out for lunch with her. So I think that internship has not only taught me a lot of professional knowledge, it also taught me to become a better, more involved citizen and be a better worker in general.
Hey, everyone. So these past four weeks, I interned at a place called Mirador. They specialize in finance reporting for, you know, family assets of all backgrounds. And, you know, I helped the financial reporting team with several of their tasks, whether it be, you know, the financial reporting itself. And I worked in several of their financial reporting websites as well as Excel. You know, I learned a lot about the field of finance and I chose to do this because my father works in finance as well. I wanted to learn more about what he did as well as, you know, pursue a passion of mine. So, you know, I gained a lot of experiments, a lot of experience in, you know, finance using the different financial reporting platforms, Excel. But I've also learned a lot of skills in, you know, organization, time management, as well as workplace etiquette. You know, I also made several great lasting connections at Mirador. I met a lot of people with interests similar to mine, you know, very bright, intelligent individuals. And, you know, everybody was very nice. It was a great work with this environment. You know, I'm going to cherish those connections for the rest of my life. Very grateful for this internship program that DHS offers. And yeah, so I have. Thank you.
About two. Oh, is this on? This is not quite loud enough. I'll, I'll be loud.
It was on, it's good.
It's on, okay. There we go. So I interned at Middlesex Middle School Teaching Choir, which is, since music is the field that I will be entering into, I thought it was useful to learn how to, because I eventually will be planning to go into music education at probably the collegiate level. So I thought, you know, learning how different people learn, you know, because I've been at the high school and the middle school was a long time ago. I thought I would refresh myself and I definitely gained a new respect for, for, for teaching at the middle school, especially in this new environment. And also, you know, I gained an additional perspective in what, you know, what it means to be a student. What I did primarily was I was the rehearsal accompanist for all of their songs because I came in right before their spring concert, which was the first Thursday of the internships. So at that Thursday concert, I was their pianist for several songs. And then immediately afterward, we were doing concert evaluations and I helped a lot with coordination. And I still continue to run warm-up pianos. I produced a lot of documentation. For example, I notated all of their warm-ups in a giant packet that they can now give students at the beginning of the year. In addition, I also notated the song they'll be singing tomorrow evening at the step-up ceremony or whatever they're calling it now. I think it's called Promotion. Promotion, okay, cool. And I'll be accompanying them tomorrow as well. That's the NS Camarada. In addition to that, I did a lot of organizational work with their music library, which I always just can newly alphabetized. Through this internship, I learned a lot about the kind of interpersonal nature of what it means to enter a career in music because I've always been very much kind of away from that aspect. I've always been in the kind of production aspect of it. And it was interesting because, especially now going into an environment that is all about human connection and patience and, you know, things, it, I think it was really a good experience for me, especially because it helped me to learn how to communicate with a lot of different types of people. So I'm very grateful that this program gave that to me. And I wish all the students who I'm now good friends with, best of luck as they enter DHS.
Thanks, John. So, you know, we reflect on this every year. You know, the internship program at the high school started about 13, 14 years ago with maybe only a couple of dozen students that participated in it. And over the years, it's really manifested into some different formats. And it's gotten to the point now where we have over 330 seniors that will participate in this. So we're really looking back at its infancy to where it is today and, and hearing some of the things that the kids do. As an administrative team, it always amazes us and always makes us scratch our heads sometimes when we hear about the kid that was in the OR with the surgeon while the body was open or, or just the variety of things that they're allowed to do and the real benefit that they get from it. So it's really worthwhile hearing the stories directly from the students, which is why we always try to invite a couple of students here tonight to share some of their stories. Welcome to take any questions, if you have any, about the program.
Board questions? Sarah?
Thank you. I stepped out. I'm sorry if this was answered. Is there, do you ever struggle to find places for, for anybody?
So sometimes students will, and that's when we encourage them to either work with, if they have identified a faculty mentor that they know they want to work with in the building to help them with something outside or, or they're, the two advisors for the program, Matt and Anne, will oftentimes will help them too. So oftentimes, people find things out either through friends of a friend or word of mouth, or sometimes they just do some cold calling and they know something somewhat that they want to do and they'll reach out and they're able to get it that way too. We start the process in the fall when the seniors meet with their school counselors in their guidance seminar and we get them onto the internship program and start getting to think about that and what steps to do and how to reach out. And then it carries on throughout the, throughout the year.
Thanks.
Charles?
I was just going to say what an awesome and unique program it is. And, you know, seeing, again, to go through it and looking forward to my third doing it. I mean, it's just pretty remarkable. The list of businesses also and how the community buys into this is just phenomenal.
Yeah, I mean, it's really cool. And again, just today, we were talking to two seniors that unfortunately couldn't come on the walkthroughs with us at the elementary school because their internship sites required them to come in today because they had work to do. And they were telling us about the experiences they had and how what they were doing this year was setting them up for jobs, not just this summer, but next summer also, when they come back from college next year. So it really helps, you know, for, for many of our seniors with that experience to build those type of relationships moving forward that we all understand as adults is important sometimes when going into the real world.
And just saying, sometimes it can pave the way for a college internship.
Yes.
For those out there.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Paul. Jill?
So if I understand you correctly, it was less than 15 students who chose not to participate. Is that?
About that, yeah. A little bit less than that, but yeah, about that. We have some other students with other circumstances that, that weren't participating either one for their own individual reasons, but it was about a handful that stayed behind.
Okay. So circumstances permitting you to answer the question, what did they do? And then my second piece of that is, I know the answer is yes, but I still want to hear it, that a lot of our children, our students with more significant needs are also able to participate in the program.
So the second question, yes, they, they are. And sometimes it's a modified version of it. You know, maybe it's not the full 30 hours a week, depending on what some of their needs are. But all of our students who want to participate are welcome too and we're able to modify it for them.
Do we have a high degree of participation?
I mean, for that population of students, I would say yes. I mean, we do. Again, it varies depending on what their needs are, but we definitely do. Again, it's a very small number of students that we're talking about, but yes, it is. Students are able to participate that in a varying degree. Regarding your first question again, I'm sorry.
Just what the kids do.
So for the most part, you know, it's often misperception is that our classes are exclusive to a certain grade level. We have a couple that are like that, but many of our classes are very mixed where it's a mixture of 11th graders, 10th graders, so forth. So for those classes, students are expected to go and, and continue to go with the underclassmen that are still participating and let's say their pre-calculus class or their physics class, things like that. For classes that are predominantly are 100% seniors, like a senior English or a law and government class, which is a senior requirement, those classes look a little bit differently where students might be participating more independently or working with their teachers one-on-one. In some cases, those students also did a project this year where they spent time working independently on a subject that they wanted to learn more about with a faculty mentor. So for example, two students that participated in that, one found a genre of music that he had never heard of before and not only researched it, but then also created music in that genre based on what he was learning. And that was his independent project. Another student learned how to read and, or learned how to, the, the, learned how to read the numbers of a dead language, basically, that of, I think it was Sanskrit is what he did. I can't remember exactly what it was, but, and did that as his independent project. So it really varies. We want students to kind of pursue things that they're interested in themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, may I add one thing to that? Paul, just to add to Jill's question, if we have students who are participating in the internship that require a level of support, we're able to provide that and we design that internship with none in mind, and it's very successful.
Thank you.
I mentioned it at the last meeting, but I will mention it again. Thank you, Shirley. My daughter participated in it. And Luke, now she wants to be a teacher in the ELP program at your school. So you've got yourself some trouble on your hands. All she, she actually said she wanted to do the some, do the senior internship program. Ellen and team went to work and she wound up at Luke's school and now she wants to be as an ELP teacher. So mission accomplished. Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good night. No, no? Yes.
I just wanted to recognize that both of these staff members have, have been integral to the counseling program from its inception, essentially. Paul led that off and handed over the baton in good shape to Megan. Megan has, has run with that. And I want to recognize that this is the last time either of them will be standing in this capacity. We wish Paul well as he goes to be assistant principal of a Newtown house call. And we thank you, Paul, for your leadership. Megan, wherever you are back there. We thank you for all of your leadership, I will say. Particularly over this last couple of years, you've led with a steady hand and a caring heart, both of you. And have seen you both sacrifice your own family time and everything for our students. So as we both stand together, we both, we, through the board, will enjoy me and congratulate you and thank you for all of your contributions in that department. We're glad that you're staying as a counselor. We're thrilled with that. But thank you for everything that you have done and you continue to do for our kids. Thank you.
No, Megan's not leaving, really. She, she can do this presentation over and over again if you want her to. I'm just saying. Thank you very much, everyone.
You'll be lured into it next year.
But thank you very much.
Thank you both. Thank you both. All right, we'll move on to presentation and discussion on department chairs. Dr. Tranberg.
We're turning the heater, the cooler off a little bit. The new system works.
Good evening, everyone. We are presenting tonight on the role of the department chair. This is an abbreviated version of a presentation that occurred during the day meeting of the curriculum committee. That meeting lasted about 90 minutes. So we've shaved off a few minutes for you this evening. There is a Q and A document that has 40 questions and those were the questions that were discussed during that meeting. So instead of all five department chairs presenting tonight, they are here because this is the presentation representing that last presentation. We are going to ask Mr. Janosko and Mr. Keeler to take on the bulk of that presentation. And if you could advance the slide for me, that'd be great. So this is just a quick overview of what we will be speaking about this evening. And as always, just making connections to our mission and vision as these roles are important and working closely with teachers to make sure the mission and vision happen for our students. And one more for me, this is just a framework that we used. Even though we have five department chairs presenting tonight, there are seven because we have two special education department chair roles as well. I think Mr. Keeler will talk about that in one of his slides. But the basic idea of teaching and learning, hiring, supervising and evaluation at students and families and how those three important things overlap in order to support our students. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Janosko to get us started.
It's great to be here this evening and I am Francis Janosko, the department chair for English for the middle school and high school. We have already heard that we're going to be representing our colleagues in this presentation, but I would be remiss if I didn't just call their names out, which is Mr. Dockham, who is our department chair for science, Christina Mauricio, who is our department chair for world language, and Dr. Bellows, who is our department chair for math. You all know them, you've seen them many times, but, you know, I have to make sure that I give them their, their due diligence and their shutout.
Good evening, everyone. So I had the, I had the ability to, to serve in both of the roles that we, we presented on the other day. I, I started off being the curriculum coordinator, the department head for the high school and then transitioned to the six through 12, social studies department chairperson. This, the change that we undertook in the first model, it was really a job that was a teaching job that had some administrative duties that took place at different times during the year. The job that we have now is one that allows us to work closely with all of the teachers in our two departments, which is approximately 30, 30 teachers in the two buildings. It allows us to be an invaluable resource for those teachers and ultimately help to make their, their work that much better. That right-hand column there highlights some of what we'll talk about as we move through this presentation. That's also really the impetus for where this position came from, accomplishing some of those goals.
Okay. Moving right along. So this chart represents one of the biggest reasons for the evolution from the curriculum coordinator role to the department chair role. In this chart, you can see the growth of student enrollment numbers over the last 25 years or so. Obviously, there are even bigger enrollment gains at the high school during that time. And there has also been a subsequent growth in teachers hired because of that. And because of that, there was a greater need for increased supervision and evaluation of monitoring of the curriculum and of curriculum alignment. Just as a quick aside, throughout the slide deck, you're going to see some of these small tables with numbers and it will call it, say, by the numbers. These don't capture every facet of what we do, but we have included them to help round out the picture of the types of areas that we are responsible for. In terms of teaching and learning, as content experts, one of our goals is to provide our students with rich and engaging educational experiences, experiences that meet their needs and also reflect our district's vision and mission. We do this through providing our teachers with coaching and with PD. We do this by guiding our teachers when they are creating standards-based units, courses and assessments that are also vertically aligned across grade levels. And we support our teachers with instructional materials. One of the things that if you have been following over the past couple of years of our presentations to the Board of Ed's Curriculum Committee, you've heard the term understanding by design or UBD fairly frequently. UBD is our district's research-based framework that we use for developing our curriculum. It's one of the most widely used curriculum frameworks in the world and it's very popular because it's very effective. It's effective because it requires curriculum development teams to begin with desired standards-based student learning outcomes in mind. Once that's established, we work backwards through a course or unit in order to plan learning experiences that will yield those outcomes.
There's no more important factor in a student's learning than the person who is charged with teaching them. And for that reason, we take our duty as the hiring chairperson very, very seriously. We review candidates. We reach out to candidates. We coordinate basically every facet of this hiring process. We organize our fellow administrators to do screening interviews with us. We organize administrators and teachers to observe demo lessons, to have committee interviews. We work closely with building administrators and central services as well as HR as we get into the reference check and the final interview rounds. We take this work really seriously because we hire for excellence. And it's something that we, we put a huge amount of effort into, whether it's hiring for a long-term position or even a short stint that a teacher has to be out and we need long-term subs. It's something that we're, we're always having to, to work on at different times of the year. Sometimes it also includes bringing students in over the summer to serve as our classes when we have demo lessons, since everyone has, everyone has demo lessons. Once we have hired, the important work of onboarding that new teacher comes. And we do this through orienting them to the different processes that the district uses, the different programs the district uses and really acclimating them to what it means to teach and learn here in the town of Darien and also to understand what those expectations are going to look like. We are also a primary evaluator for each of the roughly 30 teachers in our departments, in both the middle school and the high school. We work with them closely in observations. We have the added benefit of being able to talk with them as content experts. That expertise that we have adds a level of nuance to our discussions as we can talk about the layers of the content, the layers of the curriculum, how small ideas that are used in an early lesson may be used in later lessons, how early skills work may, may, may grow into a larger process or a larger project at a later point in the curriculum. So we are a big part of both hiring, getting teachers acclimated and then supervising and evaluating them once they are on our teams.
So this is a visual depiction of the teacher meetings that we, or that are required by our district's teacher evaluation plan. Except for new teacher orientation at the beginning, which obviously is for new teachers. All of our teachers meet with us for all of these meetings and all of these events throughout the process. These events are designed to improve teacher effectiveness. And this is obviously something we spend a lot of time on, but this is only the formal process. We have many, many more informal meetings with teachers over the course of the year through which we shape and influence their practices. Our goal is to push our teachers to constantly improve their practice, which of course is a benefit for our students. So in terms of our focus on students and families, no work that we do is more important than we are communicating directly with students and parents. We are the main liaison between parents, students and teachers. And we spend a great deal of our time counseling parents and students about courses, sometimes issues with courses and with course placements. I'm going to give you an example of how this works and it's going to be derived from a recent, our most recent presentation to the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee just last Thursday. So the purpose of that meeting was to share with the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee that next year, we will be proposing an expansion of the number of grade nine honors courses that we currently offer at the high school. At the very end of that presentation, one of the board members provided us with a very illuminating and useful comment about the role of our communication in trying to balance student learning opportunities with student wellness. We all have been talking about that since. It was, it's kind of something that has persisted in our minds. It's very important. And one of the ways we have been thinking about doing that is by having some parent workshops and some parent presentations that we do next year in conjunction with making those proposals because it's going to be important that we put ourselves in a position to speak directly to parents, to explain our rationale for the changes, the benefits for the students based upon those changes. But maybe more importantly, it's to equip parents with the kinds of questions and conversations that we have directly with kids all the time when we are giving them counsel when they're making course decisions. So we're hoping to bring that same spirit and share that with parents.
One of the things that we also do is work hard to support all of our students in the second, at the secondary level, at both the middle school and the high school. We do this by talking with our regular ed department colleagues. In those conversations, we may help them to understand an accommodation that may be listed on a student's plan so that it can be fully implemented. We sometimes will be reaching out to case managers on behalf or with our department teachers to again ensure that students' needs are being met. Sometimes we work with our special education department chair colleagues. Again, we're ensuring that students are accessing the curriculum appropriately, making sure that they have the resources that they need in order for students to be successful. Sometimes it means reaching out to special education co-teachers who teach within our discipline so that they can have feedback and coaching on how they're doing. Sometimes it means reaching out to special education teachers who are teaching comprehensive classes in our discipline so that we can support them with help with the content or resources or the approach that they're taking, just like we would anyone else in our departments. The point of all this, this web that's here in front of you is to say that there's a lot of personnel that we interact with to ensure that all the students we have in our classes are having their, their needs met. That extensively of our interaction with others is also captured here with a, a list of some of the different circles that we work with. We work within a building administrative team. We work within a secondary administrative team, a district-level administrative team. We also serve on a variety of district committees and building-level committees, again, to support the mission, the vision, the plans and the strategic plans that we have. We also are keeping ourselves abreast of changes that take place at the state level and also keeping current with changes in our various disciplines. That comes through our participation in local, regional councils devoted to our, our discipline-specific work or in larger national organizations that again, give us that ability to stay current with what's happening in our fields.
Okay, and then finally looking ahead. So, you know, one thing that I'd like to talk about is that right now, one of, maybe the, maybe the primary thing that department chairs are working on, that's a future step that will enhance teaching and learning within our departments. It's the transition that we're making from our department curriculum to the Edge of Planet 21 digital curriculum warehousing platform. Now, the process of doing this involves much more than simply replicating what it is that we're currently doing and putting it into a new format. It's an opportunity to review and revise our assessments, our units, our projects and our readings. And it also allows us to identify important other teaching and learning elements that are not represented in the current curriculum templates that we have been using. Students are already benefiting from that transition because we have finished units, we have finished, finished courses already. And once the process is complete, the entire Darien public school community will benefit from greater levels of clarity, transparency and student outcomes-based design.
Give you just one final note about our, our looking ahead, which is the work that we've done, have done, started to do this year and are going to continue to do, which is to help to bring the vision of the graduate to life. This is an important district document. It gives shape to what we want students to be able to do when they graduate from our, our school system. And as an example, we did work with our teachers this year in using it for goal-setting, talking through how they might bring some of these, these big ideas to life and how it might actually play out in their classroom. And so those are some of the examples of the type of work that we look to continue to do as we move forward. We thank you for the questions that were previously asked, that we've, we've gotten. I would encourage you again, there is a, a long Q and A document that follows this presentation, if that is helpful to anyone. And we are here to, we are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for the follow-up to the presentation, both of you. Thank you for all being here this evening and for doing all the work behind the scenes. A lot of questions were answered from the original meeting around this, so I appreciate that. So I think from a board perspective, definitely we can open it up to additional questions while we have the crew here. I think part of what we wanted to do was gather as much information as we can, educate ourselves so that we can continue to have further conversations and see what more we will, what more we may want to learn or what other questions may, we may have or suggestions as to how we want to see these roles work. So I'll pause there and I'll open it up for some additional board questions. John? So I'll pause there and I'll open it up for some additional board questions. John?
Thank you. I watched the original presentation and it went into great detail and really appreciate like all the data you guys provided. You know, I look at the student enrollment chart and it brought me back to a question I think Mr. Brown asked during this budget season regarding number of administrators passed administer like to the administrator count. So if we do further this discussion into the summer, you know, one of the things I'd like to see is a chart that kind of mirrors the timeframe in the number of administrators that the district has through throughout the student enrollment graph.
I would add to I would add to that the teachers.
Oh, sure. I mean. While we're at it, maybe just total employees as well.
Rich, I see your head down writing, but you understand what we're looking for.
I'm surprised you can't answer right now.
Give him a minute. Give him a minute. He'll put a slide up.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good. Sarah?
Thank you all for, I mean, the the Q and A is wonderful. I mean, it answers a lot of questions. I just want a quick question about question number twenty five is how you can be more effective, right? Like our role is to figure out is are all these positions that we have being used properly? Are they being accused being used in the best way possible? You know, you you mentioned the scheduling aspects of how you how that any changing in scheduling would make you more effective and make the role more effective is what I don't know if we can answer this right now, but where do we stand in the potential change in the middle school schedule? When could we expect that could happen? I don't know that that's your answer, but.
So as far as making our roles more effective, I think we would all agree that more time with our colleagues in the building during the school day would be great. And in particular, at the middle school, the middle school is looking to make a change to the schedule as we know. I am on just so happened to be on the scheduling committee at the middle school, but we are not yet ready to make a recommendation. And I'm not going to steal Dr. Dahlstrom's thunder on that one, but that is part of the conversation and and how not just for department chairs, but just for the efficacy of the whole building and providing choice for students. In so doing, it would enhance our ability to meet with our colleagues during the school day during a a pre a pre established time. We already do do that during PLCs, but it's one, you know, forty five minute session per week. So in order to meet with them more, we would have to make a change to on the schedule and not just with grade level teams, but with with vertical teams. Yeah.
Good. Katie?
Thank you. Just following up on that in terms of the effectiveness of the role and and really just compliance. Were all of the evaluations and observations completed this year, even with the scheduling challenges? Were we able to get a hundred percent compliance in evaluating all teachers?
I mean, I can I can always speak for the caseload that we have been given, but to my knowledge, in my department, all teachers have been seen the requisite number of times. Yes.
Julie?
Thank you. Thank you all. And I'll make a plug again. There's a tremendous amount of good information, both in the curriculum committee meeting of a month or so ago and this this extra document that makes fine reading. One thing that I know is something you're working on in the looking ahead area that I look forward to hearing more about is evaluation system for teachers. And you stayed here, create new systems of feedback for teachers, but I would imagine also we want feedback from teachers, right, as we help to make sure that the give and take or that this these relationships are as supportive and instructive as they can possibly be. So that's just as we move along, that's something I'm looking to hear more on.
And and, you know, the department chairs are well represented on the PDEET committee, which is charged with the task of taking whatever the state is going to pass down to us and making it into our teacher evaluation system here in the district.
Jill?
One thing I'd like to hear more about, thank you for the presentation, is that bullet point on purposeful integration of technology. I think that's a really critical part of, you know, we we somewhat stepped into it on purpose and then somewhat jumped into it because we had to. So I would really love to understand better how you guys liaise with central office staff, your building administration, where you get your thoughts and sort of how you see the department chair role of taking a leadership role in in that first purposeful integration. I have a question about the special education department chairs. I'd love to understand if those roles, if you really have sort of seven comparable roles or if you have five department chair roles and then two that are really function differently. I'm not sure. We have seen them in different contexts, so that's my first question. Are they, do we really have seven comparable roles or do we have, are they slightly different? And then I'm also curious about how, again, from a sort of a planning and framework perspective, special education gets integrated with general education. I'm specifically looking at, you know, you have UBD and then how does that, for example, align with UDL or Universal Design for Learning? How are they making those connections and ensuring that the frameworks actually work together in an effective way? And that we are doing that work from a framework perspective. I'd like to hear more about those things, please. Well, if there are answers, though, I'd certainly accept them, but I'm also happy for follow up.
Sure. Surely, or anyone want you want to add to it, but it sounds like some follow up is in order.
I think Keith did a fine job on explained, but I perhaps both things are true. I can add a little bit of color to it through now, and then we can certainly follow up with it. I think the difference between the two chairpersons for special education, one in middle school and high school, is that it's not a content driven area. They support access to the curriculum and the other domains. So it's not that we're developing especially a special curriculum, it's how to access the curriculum. With the exception of some of our programs that we have in our more specialized programs where we do have curriculum that's really about life skills and different kinds of access to the community. I think the real role is the interconnection and and the collaboration between the chairpersons for special education and the discipline chairpersons. It's really working, as Keith said, together and looking at ways to access the curriculum. So it might be with technology, it might be with learning ally, it might with books on tape. It might be with just universal design and looking at how we structure those lessons and look at them perhaps in a more scaffolding way or breaking it down into different segments that are much more manageable for learning differences. So I think it's about the specially designed instruction and not just limited to the co-taught classes as as Keith focused on, but to the other classes that don't have co-taught opportunities and how we look at that in some team taught ideas and some lab experiences for our other subjects in both in Western Civ and in math. And I think it's that collaboration. That's the difference. It's taking the specially designed instruction into the disciplines and the artifacts that we use for it and and the strategies and methodologies.
And I think just to add to that, I think some of what you're describing is probably programmatic level work where you might be looking at a comprehensive solution for a cohort of students or you might be looking at a co-taught class. But there's also individual work and we've got some differences in how the department chairs end up having to liaise because, for example, there is no special education in in Spanish. You just go into a general education environment or in foreign language, excuse me, and you take it. So I it would be helpful to understand some differences in how that looks and works between the the disciplines.
And I think we can do that at the next conversation because there are specific of working with Christina and working with the world language department of how we do it with accommodations and again, all the different artifacts of of opportunities for students. So we can certainly give more examples of that and more understanding of it.
Thank you.
You also asked some other questions. One was about technology and some of them we can easily address right now if you'd like, or we can do follow ups. But, you know, I mentioned Edge of Planet Twenty One and the work that we're doing there. Just, you know, one of the interesting things about it is it's not just sort of national state standards that are specific to our individual disciplines, but there are other standards that we're becoming more familiar with and teachers are encountering through that process. And one of them is technology standards. But there's six areas of technology standards and we're choosing from among the sub standards in order to identify which of those are going to be represented on a given assessment. So it's a part of the process. I I mentioned this when we had our previous presentation to the Board of Education Curriculum Committee, but I I hope that you can all know, just as 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 an aside, the effect that some of the generative artificial intelligence models are having currently on our classes. It's been a slow and steady climb and it's hitting us pretty hard at the end of the year. And it's pretty clear that in terms of, obviously, there's going to be an integration part of that that has to happen. But there's a lot of different dimensions to that particular technology that we are wrestling with right now. We have committees in our department that is talking about how we're going to teach writing in in light of this new arrival. So there's a lot of lot of interesting opportunities that it presents and a lot of really tough questions and conversations that we have to have to make sure that our kids are well positioned to be learning like the skills that they're going to need when it when it comes to writing, let's say. So we are working on all of that.
I I think that in and of itself, I think we would love to hear more about because that starts to change the frameworks that we're using to to design instruction, right? So but that's probably not this specific discussion. Point taken. That said, that's helpful to hear, but I would love to know more about because there's the different layers, right? There's the way that that technology comes and influences us, but there's the technology that we put into the classroom and why we put it there and how that's a part of your evaluation and how it's a part of your design when you come back.
Dave?
It's kind of following up on that point that Jill raised with the new Edge of Planet Twenty One. Is that providing any generative tools or guidance? I know, Chris, you mentioned everything kind of lives in Google now, so this would be better. But I hope we're not just cutting and pasting or their actual software tools, the development, which will take what we have and do that integration before that to give you efficiencies in that transition.
So not exactly sure. So some of the standards, so for example, the technology standards are international standards that are just pulled into that particular platform because we requested it. We have some other standards that we have been working on developing, such as our vision of the graduate and that's embedded within it, but it's something that they tailored for our particular district based upon our needs. Is that exactly, is that what you're looking for in terms of?
I'm not sure who who is they that's doing the tailoring. It's just a piece of this.
The people who provide Edge of Planet Twenty One, I mean, the, I mean, it's a business. So we have a representative that we work with in terms of tailoring it so it works for our particular district.
Got it. Okay. So I didn't know if we were doing that work, perhaps taking something in Google and saying, hey, look at this framework and rewrite it for us. But if they're doing that on our behalf, that sounds more efficient. Thanks. I had a couple bigger picture follow ups and I went down the rabbit hole a little bit on that one. But I I appreciate all the information that's been given here. I think there's a couple high level points. I think the initial motivation here, at least for me, in asking these questions was just wondering what that change was and why we went to taking some of our most skilled educators out of a classroom. And we've had a lot of information given as to why that was a good idea. I I have to say that, you know, when I look at the different roles that are being performed, whether that be HR, whether that be recruiting, whether that be evaluation, I still don't see where, you know, the great talent and experience you guys have in education is coming through there. I mean, you could possibly make an argument that, you know, we need to give margin recruiter and they do, you know, it's free up an enormous amount of your time. It seems to be spent on these meetings and on this interaction. So that's number one. But then when I, you know, start looking at that role and think about what happens sort of, you know, top of the house in general and how things are structured and what business roles are, what the, you know, assistant principal is doing, what are the principals doing? Why is the this being done, you know, some of our best teachers are playing HR? And I think it's answered, it's it's raised in me more questions than it's actually answered. And I think that probably this this needs to go forward. I think we maybe should consider as a board, looking at just sort of the overall org structure in terms of scope, in terms of skills, in terms of who's doing what. And I think all this information presented to your role really kind of leads to some more questions. Maybe we should think about where the efficiencies are. Following up on Katie's questions with the meetings, I see a large counted meetings and I see that well documented, qualified. But I don't know what happens in those meetings. I know what the outcomes are or what the effect. So should you be having twice as many meetings? Should we have half the meetings? I don't know. And I heard it mentioned here, the collaboration with the teachers in the building is one of the best touch points you guys can have, and you don't have time for that. So how do we get you more of that? And then how do we measure what efficiencies come out of that? And I'm not sure that I really know the answer. One small technical point is I think we'd ask for the contract and figure out what our options would be if we were going to try and figure out a model to return people to the classroom. I haven't seen that contract yet, so I don't know where options are there. But but I think for me, I thank you guys all for providing all this. But I think this really kind of gives us something to come back with as a board and discuss further, which I think we will really think about where who's doing what in the buildings and is that really is efficient? And, you know, maybe some, there's some bigger questions like, why do we have a six day schedule? But, you know, a couple of things like that that we could consider. So I thank you for this.
Thanks, Dave.
May I may I respond to to name just not to all those questions, but to Mr. Brown's question, just one piece? And I I probably speak for the other departments also. I know I speak for the other departments also. But the notion to your question of why take one of your best teachers out of a classroom and put them in this position, it's because then you take one of your best teachers and you make ten others your best. And the notion of really coaching and having that opportunity, have your best exemplars and and your most skilled teachers do that kind of professional development, coaching, supporting in real time also. And I recognize that there's not always time to do that. But that really is the notion of how you really improve teaching and learning. And when we take one of our, I'll speak to our special education chairpersons, when you have someone with extraordinary skills in literacy and specialty and specially designed instruction and they're an outstanding teacher, and I can tell you they both are in our cases, you you now have sixteen other teachers who get to learn from them. And our chairpersons go into those classes and help those sixteen other teachers learn. So I think if you really want to improve teaching and learning when you have a design like chairpersons, it really gives you that opportunity and that's the value added piece.
And I think that's a great notion. I think we should strive for that. But I heard a conversation about the importance of hiring quality teachers and we put all the time we do into that recruiting to make sure we get the best. So I would think that they come with a high level already, so hopefully we're topping off more than we're starting from scratch. The problem sitting here with the board trying to do our role in governance is how do I know we're doing any of that? I don't have any data in here that provides that. I love the notion. I love professional development. I want to have the best teachers we possibly can in this district. And I'm happy to do whatever we can do and work on a model that supports that. I don't know if that's happening based on what we've gotten. We've got a lot of information. And so for me, that's where the challenge comes in. Charlie, I totally agree. That's a great vision. Love to get there. But from the governance perspective, it's that's where the challenge is that I have to disconnect.
Thanks, Charlie.
Any other board questions?
Thank you all for taking time this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll move on to presentation and discussion on diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI recommendations. Dr. Tranbur?
Good evening. Again, I want to start by thanking the very large audience that we have. Most of the people here are members of the diversity, equity, and inclusion team. And they are the group that spent about forty hours over the past year and a half, which I think is time very well spent and it's also not a lot of time to do all of the work that they did and produce this report. So a quick overview, I'm going to provide some of the basic setup of what the team went through. And then we have members of the committee who will step up and talk about the recommendations for each of the groups connecting to the vision, especially my my favorite vision. I think we have a better vision than any other place, preparing all students today to thrive in a changing world tomorrow. We did hear, and it's also included in the report, about a change.org petition back in twenty twenty that had over two thousand signatures of current and former students really charging the board, the admins, and the teachers to prepare them more in the area of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I did have a conversation with the authors of that petition when I first arrived. So that's that's used as as some of our evidence. With our core values, these are the Board of Education adopted core values. These are very important to point to because we use these as an anchor in all of our meetings throughout the year. As you are well aware, the words diversity, equity, and inclusion have become rather divisive in our world. So it's important that we go back to what do we actually mean according to how we defined it? So when we say equity, we mean advocating for and advancing opportunities and outcomes for all. And diversity and inclusion is creating a community that welcomes and embraces the full range of human differences. And diversity and inclusion is creating a community that welcomes and embraces the full range of human differences. There are other definitions, but when we talk about either, either our diversity, equity and inclusion team, this is what we mean. This is a common graphic or version of it, specifically equality. And I hate saying versus equity, but that's, that's pretty much what the discourse has been. This shows in, as a picture, it's certainly an oversimplification of it, but it tells the story of equality is giving all students the same thing despite what their needs are. And equity shows making appropriate accommodations to give others what they need in order to be successful. So that is the, the anchor of our definition as well. We spent a lot of time focusing on the power of words, clarity of words, and words matter. So the equity statement took several months and that came from our own work that we were doing, looking at our guiding documents as a district, looking at equity statements from major companies, because most companies have one now. And we took a best of and went through many iterations until we arrived and largely agreed at this equity statement. And while I'm saying largely agree, I do want to be clear that this report does reflect the recommendations of, of most of the people that were on the team. And I think many of the bodies in the room are, are supporting that, but definitely not all. And the reason I'm mentioning that now is when we think about how did this all start? And how did we bring the people together of students, teachers, parents, Board of Education members, community members? There was a request by the board to make sure we are welcoming people who are divergent of thought. And we did that with the one request in the memo that I sent where they expressed, when they had to respond and express their interest, it read, "We do ask that interested participants commit to realizing the district mission and vision and share the core beliefs articulated in the strategic plan. While there is always space for our strategic planning document to evolve, it is our current roadmap as we launch this important work." And that's before we got started in January of 2022. The other thing we did in the beginning was spend time on our team agreement. So if you've been part of a group, sometimes they have norms. We didn't want to go the norms route, but we did want to make sure we were tapping into what are the assets or the gifts or the talents that people bring to the room? And what do you need in order to be successful, a successful and positive contributor to the group? And as a result, we came up with this team agreement. And so between our mission, vision, core values, equity statement and team agreement, because clearly we love language and education, that's how we opened our meetings to make sure we were level setting for what the work was about. And also anchoring us was the strategic plan. Forming the DEI team was specifically a strategy that came from goal two. And it was, as I included in the conclusion of this report, a year one and year two strategy. So we are finishing up year two and so there will be decisions to be made by the board as to how we'd like to move forward. And I've certainly made some recommendations with the team at the end. The overall charge highlighted the verbs because I love the verbs. But we were developing our own capacity in order to do the work. So one of the challenges when you're bringing a team together of educators and students and parents, they're all looking at the same information, but they have a very different point of entry as to what it means. And one specific area is looking at data. So there are some educators that look at data constantly and can make some conclusions in a second. There are other people that were looking at disaggregated data sets for the first time. So it took a lot of time and understanding and conversation in order to make sense of what we were actually looking at. So this was our basic improvement process. And the one thing we had to do was identify the improvement areas. So it goes back to, well, why are we even doing this in the first place? So it's being in the strategic plan isn't the, the best reason. It's like, well, why was it in the strategic plan? So you do some time working to uncover that. And the building capacity for change is really building the capacity of the members of the people that are in the group. And so we spent a lot of time having conversations about challenging topics. And there was homework in between meetings. So every member of the team had to form a network. And with their network, they had a, a task and assignment to go through and practice having a conversation related to a DEI topic. As time went on, we practiced different frameworks of how do you have challenging and difficult conversations? Most specifically about how do you stand up when you feel that there's an injustice for someone else? So when you're in an uncomfortable situation, what does it take for you to stand up and support someone else who might seem like they're a victim in the moment? Whether or not they are, you need to make that decision. And we've worked a lot on, well, what's your go to line? If you're going to say something and not want to interfere, because it's not always a safe thing to interfere with what's going on, what can you say just to let someone else know that what that person just said is not okay? And that's the, that was that point of entry into how do you build capacity for others? And then the data dive, which was the least favorite part of some people in the group and maybe the favorite part of, of some people in the group. Looking at data is challenging and looking at DEI data in, with a demographic like Darien can be even more challenging. So when you look through our data sets, there were times that the N was so small, the number of students in a population, that you really couldn't draw a conclusion that was a, a strong quantitative data point. So when that happened, we looked more longitudinally. So we would have an appropriate number of students. Typically you have to have, is this happening for 20 students that fit in this demographic? Then it's solid enough that you can make a recommendation and also doesn't align with the national data trends. That's another point that we used. If it did, then we felt like we could use that as a reasonable point of data. If we couldn't do that, we didn't include it. And there are plenty of times when the, and the number of students was less than 10. And when it was less than 10, we actually didn't look at it at all because it could become identifiable data. So that's, that's our basic approach to how we looked at the data. Just because there was a question of could the recommendations be more data rich? Well, absolutely they could be, but the group ended up recommending the strategies for improvement. The data points really come with, well, what are the strategies going to be to evaluate those recommendations? So it stops short of that intentionally because the work of the DEI team ends at recommending the strategies. And we called them considerations to be consistent with what we did in the gifted and talented report. So we followed a similar format because that was relatively well received and clear. The other piece as far as clarity and transparency, we do have this diversity, equity and inclusion website. If I could give you the number one thing that I get called on by complete strangers who I've never spoken with or other administrators in the state, it is thank you and questions about what we are doing with the DEI team, mostly because of the transparency that's there. There's every agenda, every bit of meeting notes, every slide deck that we've used. So everything is there that we've done and it's been helpful. And I, I bet you can find similar slide decks and DEI teams across the state because many administrators have called and asked. The other piece I wanted to point out was the, the intersection of DEI and SEL. Because SEL, similar to the word equity, is another word that's just kind of bogged us down in education. But there is to steal Shirley's word, like every time I say the word nexus for the rest of my life, I will think of Shirley Klein. But there is a nexus between DEI and SEL. And the, the anchor of this is really about just how we know ourselves, how we manage ourselves. Are we aware? Can we build relationships and can we make responsible decisions? So there's nothing more complex about SEL other than that. This has always been a part of the education lexicon. It's just never been in the spotlight. This work with SEL is, if you look at Maslow's hierarchy, like why are we talking about SEL so much? Because students can't access their learning if they're not ready to learn. And that is why this is important and that's why it keeps coming up. So that was a very quick overview of just what the team did. And I'm going to turn it over to Catherine to get us started with some of the combinations and considerations.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Catherine Takhavich. I'm a math specialist at Hindley Elementary and I'm here representing achievement group one from the DEI committee. The focus question we developed was why are there differences between subgroups of students as readers? This was determined after analyzing assessment data of students over several years. During our examination, we observed several subgroups of students who consistently fell below the benchmark on assessments, such as the smarter balance assessment and Ainsweb. Recognizing the crucial role that strong reading skills play in a student's lifelong journey and overall academic success, we became particularly interested in understanding the disparities between the general ed populations and those with learning differences across the district. We recognize that while the district has many strengths, there are always ways, there are always areas to grow and enrich all students. Practices we currently have in place include a robust instructional support system for all learners, a multitude of resources made available to teachers to meet their learners' needs and professional development activities, opportunities for all staff and their ongoing professional growth. One of our recommendations is to proactively embed performative assessment and progressive, progress monitoring tools to provide timely interventions and real time instructional adjustments in order to meet student learning needs. Our other recommendation is to assess and determine appropriate staffing levels to adequately support multilingual learners and implement individualized learning plans to guide their instruction. We appreciate your time and attention to our findings and recommendations. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. For those I haven't met yet, I'm Katie Ress, the interim assistant principal at Royal for special education. I'll be representing achievement group two for tonight. Our group analyzed smarter balance data and noticed that students who receive special education and related services have scores that fall below that of their peers. We discussed how growth is captured in addition to performance and how we wanted to think about what was either helping or impeding student success as well as ways we can further support. At several points, we took a step back and wanted to balance achievement data with the testimonies and statements that students have shared and focus not only on academic achievement, but also students' positive sense of self and social emotional wellness. This is what led us to our focus question of how may we support students of all abilities and learning differences in developing a positive sense of self, foster social and emotional wellness and demonstrate academic excellence in a highly competitive environment? A highlighted strength we wanted to point out is our robust SRBI process, one which I've seen evolve over my seven years here. We also wanted to highlight the district's concerted efforts and prioritization of student health and wellness. Areas we'd like to consider are analyzation of additional data, including student activities as well as district climate level survey data. This will help us highlight strengths and areas for improvement. In order to synthesize and strengthen the work of teacher and provider teams, we would like to also strengthen the opportunities for general education professional learning to increase our opportunities for special education providers. Additionally, we'd like to recommend increased built-in professional learning and collaboration time between general education, special education teachers and related service providers.
Hello, my name is Sarah Brown and I'm a parent of a rising 11th grade student at DHS. And I serve on the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee and I'm the achievement three representative. So our focus question is how can we learn more from strong achievement data to support the success of all students? Based on the achievement data that our group reviewed, we decided not to use a deficit approach to understand reasons behind achievement gaps between populations of students. Instead, we examine students' assets to understand how we can learn from what is going well by identifying bright spots and replicating good practices wherever possible. And so our recommendations are to convene an alumni focus group of students and/or surveys to collect feedback from recent graduates to iterate on and improve upon school experience for future students. We'd also recommend developing communications and presentations to educate students and families around a portfolio development that is tied to the vision of the graduate.
Hello, I'm Farhan of Akar. I am a junior at DHS. I'm here to represent the climate subgroup. So for most of the subgroup's length, we've been gathering information from student representatives like me about what it feels like to be a teen in Darien. We addressed the question, what steps can we take to ensure we have school climates that are safe and welcoming for all students? In our discussions, we, as students, we shared situations and moments from school environments that were troubling or upsetting, some of that included. And I'll be a little bit vague to not expose the other representatives, but that included for girls being objectified by boys, being subjected to things like toxic masculinity, marginalized students feeling stereotyped by, represented by members of the community. And the sheer amount of work, especially in the high school, getting in the way of having vulnerable conversations with teachers. And that includes not having enough time in class to implement all these initiatives meant for mental health like class charters or the ruler system. Another topic we talked about a lot was competition, how it's fostered at a young age in Darien. And especially between peers, it's hard not to compete with each other. So off of that, we came up with some commendations and considerations. One to highlight is that we have these committees, especially DEI, which I want to say is a real privilege and pleasure to be on, that creates space to better understand and address these challenges that students face in the climate. As a student, it's really important to feel heard. And before I came here and I figured out all this behind the scenes stuff that was happening, I hadn't really realized how much you all really care. So it was very important to have these committees such as this team. For our consideration, the hardest part in coming up with the recommendation was the fact that we don't really have all this information, like this honest stuff that comes from students and families. So based on that, our recommendation or consideration is to get some honest review from students, families and staff in a annual climate survey that would take into account areas like academic rigor, student expectations, student teacher relationships and a general sense of belonging in the community. It would provide a more rounded look as all members of the community would take part in it, including students, staff and families. It's very important to have representation of who actually makes up our school system and to get honest feedback. So overall, our subgroup discussed how to have students feel more comfortable at school and how to gather honest feedback and, and information. My recommendation is this feedback leads to action plans to address these areas of concern, monitor progress. We hope that in the future, we continue this effort to understand and improve, improve the climate for schools and students. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Colleen Thompson, K-12 Director of Music. The question that the program participation group explored is why are there racial disparities between groups of students who are identified for special education services and those identified as gifted? We examined the process for how the district screens for gifted identification. We also examined the makeup of students who are identified as gifted at DPS and those who receive special education services. We learned that there are currently no black students or multilingual learners in the DPS gifted program. We also learned that black students in DPS are overrepresented in special education. As this data represents a relatively small subset of students, we examined the data historically and determined that the data was similar in previous years. Based on this information, the program participation group made the following commendations and considerations. A strength is that there are systems in place that support the identification of gifted students that provide opportunities for multiple points of access. Another strength is that is our ongoing partnership with the Anti-Defamation League for student and staff education. Some recommendations or considerations include reviewing the gifted. Some recommendations or considerations include reviewing the gifted identification criteria and address potential biases that exist within the process. Also, develop a clear communication plan for families and continue to implement the related recommendations outlined in the Gifted Education Program Evaluation from 2021. Another consideration is to develop curriculum and provide resources across grade levels and content areas to ensure that all students are represented and portrayed, and also to engage all staff in implicit bias training to ensure their approach to referrals is appropriately responsive to students' needs.
Good evening. My name is Abby Shiner. I am a sixth-grade English eight teacher at Middlesex Middle School, as well as a lifelong Darian resident and a product of the Darian Public Schools. I am representing the Professional Capacity Subcommittee. Our focus question was how can we create time and space for ongoing staff development in the area of DEI? As you can imagine, we focus particularly on the need for consistent, relevant, and focused professional development for all stakeholders in the district. We believe that there needs to be systemic change within our community in order to truly foster a culture that promotes wellness, diversity, and inclusion. Our committee felt that our staff has been attempting in good faith to recruit and retain a diverse workforce, as well as create a strategic plan that emphasizes the importance of building the professional capacity of the staff. We would like to propose the following for your consideration. One, more consistent time for professional development to accommodate the ever-growing amount of learning needs among all stakeholders across the district: admin, teachers, staff, central services, as well as the Board of Education. Perhaps provide late starts or half-days specifically devoted to EIPD across the district for consistency. Two, provide specific and focused DEIPD that targets individual teacher needs as related to specific DEI topics. This could be an opportunity to tap into the expertise of educators in the district who currently have more training and expertise. We, as a community, need the appropriate knowledge to best be able to help our students in their ever-changing and developing world. Thank you.
So of course, the challenge is there are so many recommendations that came with this report, and this is the pared-down version of where the group started over about two months of just getting it down to trying to get to three per area at the most. So the next level of work is, I mean, this is simply said, is to adopt, implement, and monitor, right? But there's so much more that goes with that, because there needs to be some decisions, I would guess, on the part of the administration of where do these things fit in school improvement plans, department improvement plans, because that's where the work is going to happen? And how we monitor that, that's where we go back to, well, what are the data points we're going to look at? So it's easy to say we want to see an increase and/or a decrease in the gap between S-Back scores between certain populations, but that's not necessarily the best way to know if you're making progress, because you're always waiting for, number one, you're waiting for an entire year to know if you're making a difference. But what are the formative assessments? So Group One, Group One, yes, commented on the importance of formative assessments, so we can actually have regular check-in points along the way to know that we're making that progress. So clearly, 40 things cannot be done, and when you look at this list, I hope you're also asking, well, these sound like things that schools should just be doing, like how is this DEI versus good instructional practices? There is an overlap between those things, and that's what you want it to be. So that's, that's okay, that's appropriate, and it's also hopeful, because it makes it more manageable, and it means that we do have a lot of the skills and training and capacity with our staff to do that work, and there also is some space for additional professional learning. So with that, this is the presentation on behalf of this amazing, amazing group of people who, outside of the regular school day, gave their time for mere compensation of some baked goods, often homemade, but that still wasn't, that still wasn't enough. But most importantly, it's about the shared care for students. And Mr. Danin, you said it best, best in the state and nation. That's, yes, we can be best in the state and nation, and this work is probably the hardest part of making that happen, but all the capacity is here, the talent is here, the care is clearly here. So thank you for your commitment and including this in your strategic plan, and this is a, as Dr. Abby will say, it's a year one and two, and so technically, the DEI team has done its work, and the next decision will be, is the work done? Does go to administration, or does some type of a team continue? And that would be for you to decide.
Thank you, Dr. Tran Burke, and thank you all that presented tonight, and thank you for all behind the scenes. I know it's been a labor of love for a lot of folks that have participated, so thank you very much. A lot of data here. So with that, I'll open it up to some board questions, comments. John?
I echo Mr. Mean's remarks, or Duke's remarks. I guess, you know, what I, this is a very comprehensive report, probably do five meetings going through each one of the focus questions, but as I analyzed it, I was missing that data that informed the group. And then I went to the district profile and performance report that we're required to file with the state, and I was able to get some picture about the student populations. You were talking about the numbers and, you know, for, but some are so small a state puts an asterisk in those categories and puts in a footnote to ensure that statistics based on a very small sample size are not interpreted as equally representative to those based on a sufficiently large sample size. So I look at a school district with 4,600 students, I look at some of these subsets of groups of students. I guess the challenge I'm having is trying to find statistical significance in some of these findings versus qualitative judgment. And so, I mean, looks like we got a lot more work to do from the analytics standpoint as a board and as administration, so I guess is, the question is, you know, maybe comment on that and the struggles, and you kind of touched upon that, but two, you know, can we see that data?
Yes, so in all of the slide decks from the DEI team, one of the slides actually reads "Access to Data," and this is a big shout-out to Katie Ress, who created a document that has bi-focus question, all of the different data sources that are associated with what each team looked at, so that is all there for sure. The, we've looked at the data, it is there, it was strategic in what we included and didn't include, in part because of how the district typically sets goals. So historically, we do not set goals on raising S-Back scores, that hasn't been the approach. We haven't been in the practice of highlighting the disparities that exist between certain populations. They're there, we looked at them, but we felt that this was a more responsible way to make our recommendations in order to position the administration as they're building their school improvement plans, to set those goals that are appropriate for them. We were careful as a group not to usurp the board and the administration, even though there's representation of the board and the administration in that group, we're not here to tell you what to do, and that's why they're considerations and not, and not recommendations. There are things to think about, and there are many levers which can be pulled, as you can see, and then there needs to be strategic decisions of, well, what is going to give us the most return to benefit students? But I can get all the data, I can share the link with you all tomorrow, so you can see it.
And if I could just, you know, one follow-up going forward, I mean, we're at the unique situation where you're stepping up to be a superintendent in another school district, so you're not going to be available for follow-ups. How are you going to transition this to your successor?
Well, I know the talent that you're getting, and she is well-equipped, well-prepared. We've had several transition meetings already, and we have a couple more coming up, so we will talk about this at length.
Thank you.
And she will be able to get her head around it very quickly.
Jill?
Couple of questions. One, I'd like to know how you arrived at this set of categories. I'll use a specific example. So if I look at Achievement One, and it says, why are there differences between subgroups of students as readers? Does that mean that there are not differences between subgroups of students as mathematicians or as foreign language students?
That's a great question. So the four big buckets of achievement, professional capacity, school climate, and program participation, that's the common framework that you use when you're doing an equity audit, so to speak. Then, the messiest part is everyone gets all of the data to start, and then they migrated to, well, where are you the most interested? So people were interested in achievement, they kind of went to the achievement tables on the first night, program participation went over there, and they looked at all of the data that was available for those categories, and then they identified where the biggest disparities were. So it doesn't mean there wasn't a difference in math, because there was, but they saw literacy as a more imperative focus area, in part because it might be there wasn't just one measure that we had, it wasn't just S-Back, but it could be S-Back, and it could be AIMS Web as well. So when they saw multiple data points that showed that difference, it seemed to be a more important area of focus. So they started big with everything and then funneled to where they thought the, that the attention was most needed.
I just want to make sure I understand the last part. I get, I get the funneling, so, but, but basically what you're saying is that if we take reading versus, for example, math, that the data was more compelling, or you had more pieces of data?
A little bit of both. So it was definitely more compelling, that would be the most important thing. It was also consistent over several sources. And there's also very commonly, especially literacy, people will argue that in order to access the math, you need to be able to have access to language, because math is so text-driven now.
Okay. I have more, but.
Follow-up to that, kind of?
Thank you. So Chris, would you say then, and I had the opportunity to be part of this committee for the first year, so I was a part of a lot of this work, but that this work is exhaustive? Did you find everything? Have you uncovered any discrepancies? And can you talk to that a little bit?
Well, it's the, it's the importance of a cycle. So you make recommendations based on where you have a degree of confidence that it's a focus area, and then you circle back and see if that happens again. And then, as you asked me that question, and I know all of these people in the room, there are so many people that are sitting there that can answer these questions just as well as I can. The reason I am saying that right now is I want to go back to Mr. Senior, your point about the transition, and just the comments that were made about me and the work tonight, I am not this work. This, this is the work. The work goes on without me. I'm the person that happened to be facilitating it. A lot of the people sitting right there could have been amazing facilitators of the work just as well. So I have, this was my job, part of my job description, not because I necessarily brought anything special to it, I don't think.
Shirley, did you want us to get your attention?
May I just, just to add to Chris to that, to Miss Beth's question, I think the example, the data dive is a really good example of that, because, you know, having the data itself, there was, for example, and an example would be that students with learning differences scored lower on their S-Backs. So that gives us a very simple aspect of what that means. Our group, and our group really want to know, what's the year-to-year growth? What's the growth measuring on their goals and objectives? Are their goals and objectives measured or designed to really tap into some of the areas? Not to Chris's point, to teach you the test, because that's not what we're doing, but looking at other progress. Also, when did children enter the system? So if we have students that were looking at scores that they take in eighth grade and they just came to our program in seventh grade, that's another variable. So there were so many variables in terms of data dive, that having what we had was, not to say superficial, but on one level, where we'd want to know more depth about that, and that would inform instruction, that would inform formative and summative assessments.
Jill?
Okay, staying on Achievement One for the moment, please. So is the way I'm to read this slide, is that you believe that we have the right structures in place, it's just assessments that are lacking, that that's the difference for the gap?
Can I go first?
Yes.
That assessments are the first step in providing the next level of information that we need. So if we have more, stronger formative assessment structure in place, that's consistent, then we'll be able to make the next recommendation, hence going back to the cycle.
Dave?
Sorry, just a quick follow-up. Shirley, a moment, you mentioned being able to keep tabs and measure, and the idea of not just teaching to a test, you know, having simple metrics. How do you control for that, that the content of education doesn't vary year over year, so you can measure over a timeline what's actually being conveyed versus just looking at, say, test scores, where if you were to simplify the content of the curriculum, then presumably every score would rise? So how do you control for making sure what's actually provided there?
I'm just testing this first to make sure. I think the answer is, one, the philosophy of our district is that we don't teach to the test. That's not what our value-added piece is, we don't, we don't hold that as a philosophy of best practice, so we understand that all assessments are one, one point, if not one of a part of different points that really measure student success and student achievement. I think the notion is, we can assume, and I'll just use in terms of equity, we can assume that students who have learning differences in the area of literacy may not perform as well as their counterparts who don't have those same challenges. That said, how we measure our students who are receiving services, especially design instruction, is that what, what benchmarks are we doing that and how are we doing that? So we really need to, to Chris's point, we need to look at what our assessments look like, and are we really assessing students, and is that informing instruction? I think that's the most essential piece. So we assess, and then what do we do with those error analysis, and what we're looking at is, does that inform our instruction? And that's for all students, all learners.
Can I add to that, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, sure.
Just, just because I think one of the more bizarre things we say in education is we're not teaching to the test, when we actually design assessments based on the learning plan, it's, it's just gotten this, so it's just a weird dichotomy of teaching to the test sounds like this bad thing, because it really speaks to preparing students for high-stakes testing, and that's where that language came from. But all of the time, we're thinking about, when we design a lesson, design a unit, what do we want students to be able to know? And the first thing that we kind of do is say, well, how are we going to ask students to show their learning? So the entire plan, the entire path we go through in a unit of study is guiding those students to show mastery of that learning.
Oh, that's the three-step process we saw.
Exactly.
Yeah, I didn't see the four-step to loop it back, but, you know, just been out of that slide. I guess I wasn't really challenging, Shirley, that like we're slouching off for teaching to the test, it was really more of a, probably going down the rabbit hole a little bit, but when you look at that information from an education perspective, how do you control that over X number of years, if all of a sudden, everyone in the district is getting As, did everyone really get better, or did we just not challenge them? And so how do you control for the content of curriculum to make sure that stays constant? You know, I was just following up on that, and maybe that's a different discussion, but it's really just trying to understand how that's measured.
Well, one, Mr. Brown, one's really based on criteria reference test where everybody could get an A, and one's based on a norm reference test where there are going to be people who, by definition of a norm reference test, are for a longer-term fail or be below the 50th percent tell or otherwise. So there's nothing wrong with criteria reference tests in terms of, we're delivering a curriculum, are we executing on that curriculum? And whether 90% of the kids do that, or whether it's 70%, they could all, for a longer-term, pass or exhibit the proficiencies in those areas.
Thank you.
That's a question, actually, just, I've obviously read this and so on and so forth, and they come out later, but just on, only because our kids can excel in every aspect that they can, right? So participation rate, sometimes I would think of our students participating in clubs, activities represented in athletics and engaged in that capacity. It's silent on that, I think I know why. It's not, it's not a leading question to you, but it's, but I think I know why you're focusing on this, but I just want to, on the table a wee bit, why did, why did that not come out as anything around participation? Either as a commendation, because I kind of think it is a wee bit, that our students are so engaged in all these activities. I don't know who wants to answer that, but.
I'll start this one, then turn it over. I think Katie Ress actually spoke to it in our subgroup also, that part of what we were looking at is that involvement in other curriculum activities, looking at social-emotional learning and other aspects of achievement for students. It did come up in our subgroup.
Your hypothesis of there is a high level of participation, students, most students tend to participate in at least. tend to participate in at least one sport or one club or activity. That could easily have been a recommendation, we just didn't track it with a clear data point.
A wise recommendation.
Could I follow up on that one? I mean, did you look outside of, you know, district extracurriculars? I mean, we have post 53, right?
Yeah.
Somebody might not do sport, because their, the number of hours is enormous, in terms of what they have to do, or scouting, you know, an Eagle Scout, another example of the tremendous amount of involvement that might not get picked up by the data.
Yeah, we, we didn't do that, just because there's this, there's a theory that most students in DARIAM participate in an activity. So to, in order to do that, we'd have to survey all the students, and we surveyed all the students, and we weren't confident that we were going to find out, there's this whole group of students that don't have a thing. And so that could be a worthwhile activity in the future, but.
Which is something we did want to ponder.
Yes.
I'm sorry, something you.
We did want, we do want to ponder in our group, or whatever the format will be.
Yeah, I want to talk about program participation. I'd like to start where you are. What are the lenses through which we've looked at program participation, and specifically, did we look at extracurricular with any sort of identifying characteristics? So for example, you know, any, anything demographic, anything in terms of ability? Did we even do that review?
We didn't have a strong enough mechanism for, to, we'd have to collect the data as step one.
Okay, so we didn't look at, okay. Again, in terms of prioritizing, what we looked at, looked at in program participation, did we look at specifically for our, our students with needs, their participation in things like foreign language, or electives, and other areas where we know they are typically underrepresented?
We did, that was part of the initial, when we had all of the data that was looked at, yes.
Okay.
And, and access to honors classes, AP classes.
Yep. And there's nothing here, because it wasn't a high enough priority, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's, there were many priorities. So when you see the data, you'll be like, okay, there's lots of things to do. But if you think about how many recommendations we had, just based on these six, it can go for a long time.
Okay, so let's use that example. What makes what's here a higher priority than, than that? Again, I know I'm asking the same question with math and reading, but.
Part of it was what was going to impact the most, the largest number of students.
Okay, okay.
Sarah?
That was building on that. So there's a tremendous amount of information in this report, and I thank you all for participating in this. I think it's a well worthwhile endeavor. But now we have this huge chunk of work, and how do we prioritize going forward? What's, what's, looking forward, what do we do? I mean, how do we, how do we move this forward? Is it the administration going to come back with suggestions? Are we going to, is this going to be in our board goals? You know, how, how do we move this work forward that has been identified? And how do we prioritize where to start?
That is a very fair question. And it's been on my mind. So one of the things we wanted to do was meet, was to meet this deadline. And these people sitting here, I just want to say to you, thank you so much for staying on the course. There's so much flan around the periphery of these discussions, it's extremely difficult. Thank you to the board members for empowering the group to do the work. I think for our young people who are here, and who are not here, they see that, that this group is going forward and, and making recommendations on their behalf, and be in their voice on their behalf. Thank you specifically to our children and students who are on this committee. I couldn't be more prider of the work that you've done and the recommendations that you've brought forward. I would say, just, we, we met this deadline, and meeting this deadline, which is right at the end of the year, and you may say, well, you chose a deadline, well, yes, but I tried to make sure it was completed for this year. First of all, my administrative team hasn't completely reviewed this either. So we need a wee bit of time administratively to reflect on the same record. I've been involved at some level the whole way through this, right? But at the same time, my principals haven't centered the whole team, essentially most of them have been on it. But we need a reflective time, just to advise the board or make recommendations of order, how we think we should move, that should move forward, whether end of goals directly or otherwise. And the board needs to reflect on, does it need more information or not? But that, I mean, I said, I'm not trying to pass it off, we would do that rather quickly, but we just need a wee bit of reflective time.
Julie?
And perhaps, as you all reflect, Chris could share with us the, the data deck, so to speak, and, and those who want to dig in a little, just to, to get a little more of a complete picture. I think that might be valuable time spent for board members to feel like we know a little more about what's behind it all. And the other thing I want to reflect on a little more is kind of going back to where we began, and we did have a speaker at Public Comment this evening, who I thought did a really good job of reminding us of where a lot of this had started from. So I just think, I, I want to reflect some more too, I guess is all I'm saying. Thank you.
Jill?
So back in program participation, we note that we have black male students in particular who are overrepresented in special education. The N is probably fairly small, but I see the number. So did we do any additional work to validate that that's the case? Have we reviewed those IEPs to say, yes, we actually believe that that's valid?
That would be the next data dive to look at. We did not go into that detail of it.
I'm not saying that there is or isn't bias, I just want to understand the methodology that was in place. Okay. When we say that it's similar in previous years, how many years did we actually look back?
We looked back five, and the, the number of students is usually around 40 for, for that population.
Okay. Okay, I want to talk on, I'm just going to talk about climate. Can you, two things I want to ask. Can you touch quickly on the relationship between what you're talking about as climate and what we do for, at the state level? Because we have, we do our own climate assessment that's required by the state. And so I wanted, this sounds like this is in more detail, but I want to understand the relationship between those two things. The second thing I wanted to talk about, that it goes in the category of climate, that I don't see in here, is sort of how we talk as a school district when something happens. You know, we had a couple of incidences that kicked this off. I don't see a lot of language in here about, whether you call it remediation, or, you know, restoration. What was the conversation around that? Is it not in here for a reason?
The first would be, yes, this could be, this, the climate survey could fulfill the state obligation. I know that Dr. Data is working with the team to look at some options for the best tool, in order to capture the data in a way that it was articulated here. To the other question, I don't believe, because I couldn't be in six places at once, that was not at the center of the conversation. And again, step one was, can we get the information that we need in order to make the recommendations for those next steps? And I shouldn't say it wasn't there, because when I'm thinking about the conversations I had with a few people in the room, it is the idea of, well, what do we do right now for the reporting and the response? That was not, it just didn't work its way in, because the, of what was prioritized in.
Thank you. I want to back up and explain why I'm asking the, the biased question. I'm asking it because I think it's important. I do believe children should be, and our students should be in the least restrictive environment, if they can be. I also believe a childhood needs to be identified, should be identified. So I just think that if we've, think there is a potential issue, that we need to do that work, to make sure that our students are getting what they need.
Can I ask just one more big picture question? I mean, clearly, Mr. Chairman, that we got a lot of questions around this report, and, yeah, look forward to having opportunities to ask more. But I guess I go to the achievement group number three, and you, you talk about teams often take the deficit approach, versus the asset approach, or you called it student asset approach. And on this one, you kind of flipped it. I guess, taking the deficit approach, it helped me understand why we go on with a deficit approach, instead of looking at an asset approach, especially in a district like this.
I think it's not only a district like this, I think it's the way that we see the world. It's easier for us to see what's wrong, rather than what's right. And when you do reports like this, those disparities pretty much jump out at you very quickly. What was interesting in our look is there were places where Darien did not profile, like many other districts do, with an audit like this. So I said, if we're not profiling like this, can we actually look at what's different? What's good? Can we take an asset approach and say, how do we learn from the good work that's going? So this was an opportunity, and I've never seen another report like this, that actually had a focus question that way. And I know, I think Dr. Forsell's over here, I don't know if you have anything to add to. Is that okay if I ask him? And I know that was his group.
Absolutely. It just has to get in front of a mic. Sorry, sorry, sorry you stayed so late.
So I want to thank our achievement group three representatives on this topic. But we did view the data and wanted to build from the assets up. We felt that this was an opportunity, particularly when looking at SAT performance, for high-performing students to understand their stories, to think about portfolios. I think that came across in the recommendations. There's a lot of good that's happening, and so we wanted to take that, from an equity standpoint, make the access point for, for the learners who are performing at that level, more accessible for. So that was basically in a nutshell, take what's good, try to scale it.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you, Jill.
This it. There's a discrepancy between the number of recommendations in the report and the number on the slides. I'm assuming that's in part just to make it fit on the slide, but is, is there an actual prioritization embedded there?
So the, a couple of the groups got to work on their slides after the deadline. So they might have changed the priorities, but all of those, whether they're in the packet or on the slide that you saw, they're all included in the actual report itself.
Okay.
So it's.
So it's the report that we should be looking at, or what the actual recommendations are, not the slides?
They're the same, but there's more of them in the report. Yep.
But they're not recommendations.
Considerations.
Considerations.
But are these, just.
I mean, that's important.
Yes, it is.
Just to be clear, is this the highest, for each of the groups, is this the priority considerations?
Everything that made it into the report was prioritized from a list that was much longer than.
Yes.
What was included.
No, but then on the slide deck, like the slide deck we have, are those considerations that prioritize consideration from the report?
We call them highlights, but I guess you can call them priorities.
Okay.
Now, I guess, Dr. Ali, to that question, is when you and your, the rest of your team go through this, those priorities may change?
I don't think we're going to go right into completely left field from it, but if we had questions from it, and follow-up questions, or, or excuses we had to pursue, then we would do that.
I guess my, you know, again, thank you for all the work, and there's a lot of data, I think, for the board to look into and review, and I think we need more updates and more conversation. I know, Chris, you'll transition to Amy, I know she's been in district working. So I think it's good. I wish just kind of a lesson learned, I think, as all this work was going on. I think on a go-forward basis, as this work continues, there needs to be more regular updates to the board. So a lot of information to look at and digest a year later. And it just gives me pause, the whole process of prioritization. So I think they would have been good conversations to at least have along the way with the board. I think that would have helped, even with some of the questions and the thought process tonight. But I guess, I think that's what we have to think about in a line, is goals and objectives with the strategic plan, and how some of this stuff does fit from a prioritization standpoint. John?
I recognize this is slightly not, this is slightly moving away into more of a kind of cumulative thing, because I'm noticing a connection between this presentation and the one that was made about the department chairs. But one of the things that I, and this is also my, my last opportunity to ever talk to the board, so I thought I might use my time. Well.
I, I hope you'll come back and.
Come back to Public Comment, but I thought I would make this now, just because it popped into my head. But, um, one of the things I'm, I'm wondering is, I know the district is very focused on making sure that students, all their, all the diversity of needs are met. But when we look at teachers, and how, how their different teaching styles are, are being considered, it, it, it does seem as though, and I'm looking at this in two different categories, both from this meeting and also from what I've experienced, because I do talk with lots of teachers at the school, that it, it does seem kind of like, or I guess my, my question would be, is the board, is it the board's opinion that, you know, while students have, well, well, you know, the, the breadth of student needs is trying to be met and facilitated, that different teaching styles should be kind of streamlined, that would kind of provide a unified approach to teaching all students? Because what I, what I'm noticing, the reason I ask that, is on, on the slide about professional capacity, one of the things that was proposed was providing, quote, focused and differentiated professional development, targeting teachers' individual needs to teach layers, explore different DI topics. And when I read that, what I immediately think of is, I'm looking at different teachers' approaches to how they address certain DI topics in their classroom settings, and saying, I mean, by some, you know, measurement, we think that you need to, you know, work on this need, on this individual need. And so I'm wondering what that really means, in terms of, you know, evaluating a, a, a certain teaching style, or a certain way that a teacher communicates with their, their students, and, and whether those, and whether there is some district identified objective way that a teacher should be, should, should be addressing these DI topics in their classes. And also, yeah, along the lines of talking about different ways that teachers teach, one of the things that anecdotally I've heard a lot about, and I failed to comment on this during the conversation, about the, the department chairs. But one of the things I've heard is that, having, when, when teachers have, have a meeting with a department chair, who, for example, and this is one of the benefits of having a teacher, of having a department chair who once taught the subject, and is still an active teacher in some regards, that they can, they can offer comments on a more, you know, subject basis, as opposed to having a, having a school principal come in, who was maybe a math teacher, evaluating an English teacher, and there's a different level of, of analysis going on there. One of the things that teachers have, have been saying, you know, you know, kind of private conversations with me, because I stay after class, because I'm interested, is, um, you know, if, if a certain teacher teaches in, in some way that the department chair would not like recommend, or maybe that's just their personal preference of, you know, difference, different things, you know, what, what objective measures are in place to ensure that, for example, like at department chairs, you know, personal preference in teaching style, or I guess, in any sort of, any individual district employee at the higher level, at the administrative level, any personal preference is not being used as some objective measure of, of like, the way a teacher should be teaching, or, or, you know, some, some, some kind of metric that they're supposed to achieve. Because I know that our teachers come from a very wide breadth of, you know, backgrounds, and, you know, since they're the ones interacting with our students, then, you know, maybe, I, maybe, maybe there should be some, some, you know, investigation into, into what, what that means. I'm not sure, if, I'm not sure if you see what I mean. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I, I feel like there, I feel like there's just a, a difference in the way the district is approaching students, and their, and, and all the different ways that they learn, versus teachers and all the different ways that they want to, and know how to, and have been teaching. So I don't know if that's just a comment that's separate from this thing, that can be.
I think your last, your last sentence there kind of pulled it all together, and I think it's a good comment. I think actually it plays a little bit into Mr. Brown, as to, as you're teaching, the question to Shirley, like, and you're looking for those results, how do you know that teaching is consistent, and what is actually driving those results?
Exactly.
You've got learners, and you've got educators. So I think that's a component of the, the ongoing discussion. So I think it was a good, good thought process, and good question you went through. You want to add anything to that, Helen?
No, I, I would say that we, one of the greatest attributes we have in the quality of the teachers, and the individuality, and we, we depend on that. But there is a guarantee and a viable curriculum that we want all students to experience. Those are, they're not mutually exclusive concepts of individuality, of bringing to the table. We're not going to go, there are learning principles that we're agreeing upon, that's going to PDAC Committee, you'll like to hear that in another couple minutes, that we'd like to, to have some agreement on, but we're certainly not taking away the individuality of our teachers, because that's, that is actually what we depend on.
I think the only thing I would add, John, and, because it's an interesting point you bring up, is that I think, in, in my experience as a parent in the district, I think from the elementary through the middle school, through the high school, I think there's a lot of time spent when classes are organized. And as kids go through elementary school and into middlesex, I think the administration and the teachers all invite, all involved in those children's learnings, really take time to understand where they would fit in a classroom with a teacher, where they would fit in a, a team at middlesex, and I think where they fit in, in terms of what they want to do, in terms of extracurriculars, clubs, and councils, and stuff like that at the high school. So I think there's a component of that, that takes place with a lot of hard work. Good. All right. So thank you all again. Good. All right. So thank you all again. A lot of data, a lot of information, I think, will follow up and circle back as to how this looks from an agenda standpoint. I think, Dr. Adley, I would ask that you come back to the board and just give us kind of a timeline as to what you're looking for in terms of your team kind of digesting this, working with, whether it's the team of the department chairs or the principals, I think. And I think the board would like to understand a little more around the prioritization of this. And then I, I will tell you, my, my concern is to the point of the conversation around everything tonight, time, energy and resources is, how do you execute? You know, how do you execute? You know, my, my fear and my honest opinion is, I'm not sure where everyone has the time. So that really has to be thought through. There was a comment in here about resources and professional resources. So I think we'd, we'd like to understand that. Cause I think, again, our role is to understand and support and, and fund, but I think we have to understand how you execute it all. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank, thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for staying late on a school night. Moving right along, update on strategic plan and board goals, Dr. Adley.
So with your understanding, I'm, I'm sure with you, we're at the end of the year. So I'm just going to keep this at a very, very high level for the moment, if you, if you don't mind.
And I would, I would, I will. I would say, is there anyone that has any questions around this? Cause we've all done our homework and read through it. So is there any conversation and questions we want to have on this right now? I think we'll have further discussions as we go into retreat and around goals and strategic work, but anything specific to the document Dr. Adley has in front of us and the updates? Yes, Julie.
Two, I think, quick ones.
Sure.
Board goal one, um, the status talked about tabletop exercises. I don't know what those are.
Sorry, which one? Sorry?
Uh, board goal number one.
Yes.
Made reference to tabletop exercises.
All right, the safety drills you're talking about?
The.
Where are you there?
Yes.
Yeah, tabletop exercises. That's just, um, you come together and you have a scenario on the table and you executed the table as opposed to having to go out to schools or it, it, it's a, it's a simulation of, of a drill.
Thank you. Um, and then board goal four, I think there was something missing.
Something missing.
Hang on one sec, I'm getting there. It says presentation, nope, presentation to various town organizations, but it doesn't say on what is that?
I just, I'm down below.
Just district stuff.
Oh.
Last point in the end of your update.
Oh, um, mental health issues, security issues.
So a variety of topics.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you.
I will think that there are a couple of things, you know, we have, we have to still do, so I'll point those out a little later point, because, you know, we didn't get we didn't get everything that we would like to do at the extent we would like to do it. And if we even should do it.
Any other board questions or comments?
Good. Hey.
Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I, that teaching and learning principles awaiting final.
Where are you, where are you looking?
Strategic plan goal one.
Great. Say that again, Jill.
The first bullet there, teaching and learning principles awaiting finalization by PDAC. I know what it is, but I just wanted to touch on what happens happening.
So the, we can speak more to this, but the teaching and learning, learning principles help them develop and they're going to the PDAC committee. Because that has to be, those will have to be embedded in the actual PDAC process for development, the teacher evaluation plan and so on and so forth. So we want to make sure that they have seen it before it comes back.
Significant to highlight in the development of those.
No, just waiting on the title, the new framework for teacher evaluation. I shouldn't even call it a framework because they're not giving a framework. As we want to see how much space there is, because you really want to make sure your teaching and learning principles are going to guide what that work is. So we're just waiting to see, well, what does this look like? It sounds a little bit like a blank check at the moment.
Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you, Dr. Adley. Further discussion and possible action on the 2024, 2025 district school calendar?
Uh, so where we left it off was the first reading. Katie, you did share with me, I couldn't make it for to include it as part of this packet, just given the timeframe of it. But I did look at the, I guess the community schools of Frankfurt, which is in the, in Indianapolis. It sort of did, if you remember what Katie had suggested, that take a couple of days throughout the year. Put in a couple of days where you may be able to make them up. So that is one scenario. I would say just in general, that, I think this will be a better accept, this currently what you have, like our, our current plan will be better received by our staff per se. One of the things for that is, it was predicated, I think, on taking a couple of, I don't know, September, January and say between, if there's a snow day between the first of January, 12th of January, you would make it up on the 15th of January. If not, then there's no school that day. That, if that doesn't play for snow, then you're ending up with, at the end of years, a longer school year, technically. So I think it.
Contractual issues?
Yeah, would there be contract?
No, there would be con- contract consternation probably. They have to work a certain amount of days, but you're, don't dictate that certainly the teachers don't say what those days are, but start. It's not, it's not, it's not a crazy idea, like, by any means, right? It's a reasonable idea and one we can explore further. We want to have a deeper, a more fuller discussion on that. Do you want to defer this or consider that for, for next year type thing? I just, I, I personally don't think it's going to be well received by our, our teaching staff.
Yeah, it's nothing I would do this year, but we can put it on the table for further discussion. Any other questions, comments?
This is the following year, right? This is 24.
24.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. All right. May I have a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 district school calendar? Sarah, second by Tara. All those in favor? That is unanimous. All right, good. Thank you. Discussion and possible action on relocation of Oxbridge Playground and Equipment to Henley. So we. Rich or who? Rich.
Okay, cool. So this is happening outside of our normal financial report. One of the main reasons is there's a little bit of a time crunch. Since we have multiple building projects kind of converging at once, we do have a playground at Oxbridge that has to be moved, whether it is either moved to Henley or demolished, it does have to go. Uh, it is a relatively new playground and only about nine years old and in very good shape. With another building project going on at Henley, the current playground structure does have to be removed and they will be down multiple playscapes. So the recommendation is to move the playground at Oxbridge, this 2014 playground to Henley so that they can have that playscape in place. The cost from the vendor is $64,890 to move this playground, which is in very good shape and is actually better than the current playground that exists that has to go at Henley. If you recall from our previous financial report, we are running a relatively strong balance. If approved, we bring that balance down to about $761,000. We would recommend taking the funds from the unused student interns that have been unused as we've tracked the financials for basically the entire year and then some savings.
Thank you. Great. Yes, John. Um, so 2014, I think they raised 80,000 for it. So I just want to make sure we're being financially smart. So what's the useful life once it gets moved to Henley?
It, it should at least get more than 10 years.
Okay. Um, and that 80,000 didn't include the site work. It was just. So, so it was much more than.
Um, if we were to not do this, you would probably need about $15,000 to demo the existing playground at Oxbridge and probably close to $100,000 to build a new playground at Henley.
Okay. And then from a building standpoint, they're perfectly fine with the equipment?
So Henley is very much in favor of receiving the equipment.
Okay. Well, it's an awesome playground. Julie.
And just to confirm, Ox, Oxbridge is going to be completely new.
Yes, which is why this one is going.
That's on a slide. Sorry, I shouldn't mention.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Sorry, I shouldn't mention that.
And a slide.
Just, just the line in the memo, it says there's, given there are no funds available in the HHR budget. I don't know if that's exactly true. It just makes more sense for it to be done at the board level.
Wasn't a planned expense as part of HHR. So if you weren't having any building projects going on and, you know, Oxbridge raised $80,000 to have a new playground, you could do this normally as part of your operating budget if you wanted to move it to, whether it be Henley or another school.
Well, again, can you raise, sorry, you raised a question. I mean, why isn't it part of the building of budget? Or maybe I'm asking you, but like we have contingencies, right?
Well, that's what I was saying earlier.
Okay.
We do, but we don't have the bids in. There's not a lot of flexibility in the budgets. It doesn't really make sense for us to take it on in terms of how much flexibility we're carrying at this stage, but also it sort of falls in between the, the building committees. It's not really something we were planning to do, but it's silly not to.
Got it. Okay.
It's in great shape.
Good. May I have a motion to approve a transfer from the Board of Education FY23 budget in the amount of $64,890 to fund the relocation of the Oxbridge School Playground Equipment to Henley School? John Ceni, second by Jill Ollos in favor. That is unanimous by everyone present. Thank you. We will move on to a discussion and possible action on the renaming of the Darian High School Oval Road. Alan, do you want to talk through this?
Yes, uh, thank you. And I, I recognize that this is an unusual request and sort of the timeliness of it, given that graduations around the corner, I want to thank the Wave Strong. Do I have the Wave, some of the Wave Strong parents here? I don't think so. I don't think so. Okay. Cause I'll, I'll just mention, if I may, there's a couple, a particular Laura Brammer, Kim Swift, Amy Offing. Oh, I think, right. So those, those couple of parents are certainly highly involved, as are some coaches, students, community members and essentially, yes, sort of late in the process, but they came with the idea of, could we, could we not rename, there's, the oval doesn't have a name, right? But name the Oval Wave Strong Way and three particular areas, about the three entrances. This organization, as you know, has been instrumental in supporting our students, collaborating with our administrators and our high school in particular through the last couple of years and the, the challenges that we faced, I, I have put down there that why it exists. Cause I think it's important that any organization wants to suggest something, you should, you should understand why it exists and this is in their own words to break down stigmas around mental health. We have strong have been a partner with the school, supporting all of our students. So preliminary online discussions with PNC, the Police Department, term and just individual request and the first selectman seemed to think that this would be, we could do this. But that being said, what I'm coming for is to say, essentially, can, can the board vote to initiate the intention of, of moving forward with this proposal with the understanding, you got to go through whatever processes we got to go through, whether we know what they are now or whether we don't know what they are now. The, the, this would be dedicated to all the high school students. That's the intent of it. If the board does go through with it, they are going to like, there's only two days of graduation, so that there will be a PR thing tomorrow, there'll be notice, a notice tomorrow, there'll be a photograph of it tomorrow. So they're ready to go. And I, I maybe we have presumptions in this and the way I'm putting it forward, but there's no way to make it happen quicker without us doing it in this particular way.
I think the, the group understands kind of, or was educated in that there's a process around this and we don't necessarily have the right policies in place. I reached immediately out to our first selectman, Chief Anderson and Chairman of Planning and Zoning. None of them had an issue with it. The chiefs, you know, stressed that the, um, the roads and the first selectman, the roads are under our care, control and custody, the oval. It's not changing the address for mailing or emergency service purposes or anything. So everyone, Town Hall, the, the Darian Police Department and Planning and Zoning was very supportive of it. I think originally this came, I think, Dr. Adley, to us as a gift from the class of 2023. Alan, I think in, in a great idea went out and, you know, spoke to them about being, you know, for everyone. So I think in the interest of getting things done and with graduation right around the corner, so I said to Alan, let's push this up to the board. I know a lot of individual conversations. We made sure everyone understood kind of what we were trying to do here. So they understand, we're going to go through our process, but I don't see any issue in putting three signs up that describe it as, you know, Wave Strong Way. So questions, comments?
Sure.
My only question is, do we have stu-, we certainly have student buy-in, you know, they're not, do we have input from students? I guess it's a question.
My understanding is that the input from the students would be the input from the students who are part of the Wave Strong group, but I, I couldn't quantify that to be honest.
And then the other one is, if we do rename it, it's not, nothing is into perpetuity. I mean, it could be changed 20 years from now to something else. Yeah. So, okay, perfect.
Um, I would say that you'll see a wee bit of advertising, since I'm saying it's dedicated to all the students, you'll see a wee bit of advertising that or perhaps would use words in, in recognition of the leadership of 2023, but the whole thing would be dedicated to all the students in the school.
Perfect. Good. All right. So I think what I, what I think would make sense is to get a sense of the board that we're okay with this, understanding that we're going to go through our policy around naming in general and advertising buildings and fields and stuff like that. So.
Sorry, Duke.
Yes.
So does that mean that we're, we're saying we're okay with it, provided that when we go through the policy exercise, it's in keeping with what we decide?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, not really. Did we talk about this was kind of grandfathered in and whatever we create in the future, this would be outside of whatever policy we create if we're talking about a naming policy.
This is neither advertising nor.
Right.
No, but this would fall in, I, I don't see any reason why this shouldn't fall into the policy we are going to work on and come to an agreement on.
But are, are we moving forward on this and we're working on the policy or we're going to move forward to work on the policy and then we'll see if, try to make this work?
This will work with whatever policy we work on.
All right.
Let's not make it complicated. My God, would make things complicated over anything.
Thank you.
All right. I get a sense of the board that we're in support of renaming the Darian High School Oval Road to Wave Strong Way, subject to working through any border town approval process, which we have. There's no indication that there is any border town approval process, but it will be in line with the work that we do on our policy around naming rights for buildings, roads, fields. Sarah, second by Tara. All those in favor? Good. Thank you. That's exciting. I think that's a good thing as we end the school year. We'll move on to first reading and discussion of the proposed revisions to the Board of Education policies and we'll turn that over to Marge and Dave.
Essentially, these are better, worse described as cleanup edits from our attorneys based on different changes to statutory language and various different statutes as cited for everyone's first reading.
Assuming that's people dropping off. Losing power. Oh, okay. We're losing power. All right. So a lot of work done by Marge and Dave and the Board Policy Committee here. So this is a first reading and discussion to these policies. Any board comments or questions as they stand right now? All right. So we'll bring them back again for any further discussion and possible action. So Marge, anything on the personnel report? Are your recruiting efforts still good?
So as of, as of tonight, we've been able to hire and fill a lot of positions. Our administrators are working quickly to get, you know, positions filled. We haven't had as many resignations, which and I were talking about as we have.
Haven't had as many.
Resignations and retirements as we have in past years. Sometimes in this district, they come late, but we'll see.
Okay.
I know this is a wide spectrum of experience too.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for all the work around that. I, I, having been part of the process on, on Chris's replacement, it's a lot of work between scanning through the resumes, kind of doing an initial read and then the interview process. A lot of time and energy is put into that. So thank you. I know there's a team of people behind you that out Marge, but thank you. We will move on to our last action item, which is an action to rescind the non-renewal of Catherine Perez-Antone. Dr. Adley, do you want to give a quick update on?
Yes, on the, the last April meeting, April 25th, the board took action to non-renew Catherine Perez-Antone. In light of receiving subsequently, Mrs. Perez's resignation, I would motion that the board rescind the April 25th action to non-renew Catherine Perez-Antone.
Good. In light of receiving Ms. Catherine Perez-Antone's resignation, may I have a motion to rescind the April 25th? In light of receiving Ms. Catherine Perez-Antone's resignation, may I have a motion to rescind the April 25th, 2023 Board of Education action to non-renew Catherine Perez-Antone? Motion, Dave, second by John, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move back to Michelle, public comment.
If anyone in person would like to participate, please wait for the chair to recognize you. You will have the three minutes to come and you can state your name and address for the record. Tiffany O'Connor, 48th Ward and Road. I didn't expect to be back at a Board of Ed meeting after my youngest graduated. Strange feeling. I wasn't part of the D E I team, but was somewhat involved with the D E I initiatives through the P T Os and wanted to come back to hear the considerations and recommendations tonight. I vividly remember the students asking for change in 2021. And I'm extremely impressed with the committee's thoughtful recommendations, and I look forward to hearing your next steps. I also wanted to thank Dr. Tramberg personally for leading and facilitating such important work despite the challenges and even hostility, fortunately. Thank you for standing up for what is right, no matter what, come what may. And thank you for standing up for those who needed it most. We have so many extremely intelligent, well spoken people in leadership positions in this town. But I personally think that we could really use more people like you, standing up for what's right, even if it means you may not remain in that position that you're in. So I want to thank you for the example that you've set in addition to all you've done. Wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Anyone else in the audience? Michelle, anyone online?
If anyone online would like to participate, please use the raised hand option. There are no raised hands at this time.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? Jill, second by John, all those in favor?